Did you want me to sit there instead or no? I don't know if it's weird just having to tell me which seat to be.
I thought of that.
Turn into vice chair?
I don't want to move chairs, I just wanted to.
Hello.
I'm Bob. We could have Patty sit there.
Yeah, that's true.
Are we good? Okay. Good evening. I'm going to call to order our meeting of August 25th. Tonight, we're interviewing candidates for the acting town manager role. Michelle Pryor, Chair. Anthea Brady will join us in a minute, joined by members Bill McGonigal, Paris Miani, Mike Bettencourt. Our first applicant is Bob LaLecher. We're going to give you maybe five minutes or less. Introduce yourself. We do, everyone has your resume, so assume that we've read it, but maybe you might want to say something about yourself, about Winchester or your interests. So I'll turn it over to you and then we'll do a round robin of questions.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks to the board for having me. My strongest link to Winchester is our youngest daughter was born here, so that's a special link. I spent quite a bit of sensible years in the private sector before I stumbled into this one. I realized once when I was a portfolio manager, did a lot of travel, and I realized once that I was getting madder when business interfered with FinCom where I was a volunteer. And I started to realize, maybe if I liked that stuff better, I should think about this. So I was on FinCom for eight years in Redding, then Assistant Town Manager, Finance Director, and then Town Manager, all for roughly similar, you know, seven to eight to nine years. It's a really rewarding and interesting experience. My background is working with very high-pressure, very intelligent, very intense people, and I wondered when I went to the private sector or the public sector how different it would be, and surprisingly, it wasn't that different. There was a lot more openness, if you will, and transparency certainly, but I found the quality of the employees and the volunteers to be excellent, which I was, you know, really happy for. As the town manager in Redding, I sort of grew up from inside, so I consider myself a Redding resident, and then I happened to get these other roles as opposed to a town manager that happened to be working in Redding. That was not me. I was a Redding person, which will be a challenge in another community. I retired just over three years ago, full-time, and took a week off and then joined Concord, Mass. for about a year and a half. Their town manager was acting, and she was the CFO, and she needed the CFO job to be filled, so I agreed to split the job with a woman I used to work with, and we ended up staying for a year and a half before that all got sorted out. And it was really helpful to see how Concord did things, not just Redding. In Redding, one of the things I was actually proud of was starting up and really encouraging the Town Manager Breakfast Club. So Mayor Howard and Lisa, you know, were members. Beth, not so much. She was more interested in here and busy with her kids, which is understandable. But you get so many good ideas from other communities, no matter how good you are, no matter how good your community is. Other communities have faced way more issues than you have and have lots of ideas and lots of solutions, so you're faced with an opportunity to get, take some advantage of that, if you can find some help in the interim and sort of put to bed your worries about the day-to-day and focus on the next town manager and possibly really culturally get into what is it you want here? You know, what do you have? What do you need? What do you want? And I would hope that the interim town manager that you choose allows you the luxury of doing that. You're a busy community. You're a volunteer-heavy community, possibly even more than Redding, which I didn't think I'd ever say. But I really have enjoyed this profession, and I've also enjoyed, in retirement, working part-time, both formally and informally. My most recent one was helping coach a candidate for a town manager job that she just received an offer and she should have received one a few years ago, so I was really encouraged by that. So I like helping people. I like getting out in the community and getting out in the profession.
Great. Thank you for that. So we're going to ask the questions. If Anthea doesn't get here by the time we get to question two, we'll circle back to it, but it's going to go Michelle, Anthea, and then Mike, Bill, and Paris, a little bit of an order of seniority. So I have the first one, which you have a copy of the questions as well. If you could describe for us how you plan to get to know department heads and other key staff, and how do you generally develop and maintain relationships with department heads when you would be the acting town manager, given your lack of, you know, you're not coming up from downstairs, so how would you build those relationships?
I think Concord's a pretty comparable situation, where I came in basically from the cold. It seemed like the best thing for me to do there was build a capital plan, and I went out and met all the department heads of all sorts, and quite honestly, they said it was the first time someone from the town hall had come to see them in a positive way in many years. So it was, you know, you don't like to just always be criticizing, you know, somebody for something. You like to have good experiences and, you know, getting to build a 10-year capital plan instead of the five-year one they had, and it wasn't balanced on purpose yet, so it was just really the needs of all the departments. And once they realized I was serious, it really opened a lot of doors and a lot of things came tumbling out. The department heads had wanted to say things for many years. They knew full well they weren't going to get everything they asked for. And in Redding, we did similar, where we actually, we were relatively small in terms of eight department heads. All eight department heads would have given up things for their colleagues. That's how much of a collaborative experience it was. So that, some kind of exercise like Capital Plan would seem to be the best thing, where you not just have department head meetings where everyone's there and no one really knows what to say. You do the one-on-ones. You've got to do that. And to the extent that the people don't know me, let them call around and ask, find out what I am.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, I'm going to go to you.
Yeah.
And we'll make sure we come back to Anthea's question.
Thanks. Number two here. What experience do you have? How many contracts have you been point person on negotiating your permanent or acting manager-administrator role? If you've ever been point person, please let us know. So collective bargaining agreements is the question, I guess.
Millions.
Yes.
In Redding, we weren't heavily unionized, but we had eight unions, and even as Assistant Town Manager, I was involved in all of them. The key is have a good relationship. The only time things didn't go really well was when outside influences would come in to the room to represent the unions. And just as one example, I had one union during COVID, the president of the union wanted to see me Monday at 8:00, and he said that he had been unable to sleep all weekend because his national rep yelled at me on a negotiating session on Friday, and he said, "You didn't deserve that." None of what he said was true. "I'm really sorry. We've kicked them out."
Yeah.
So the key is you really have to have a very honest, open discussion. They didn't get what they wanted. They knew they wouldn't get what they wanted, but the key was neither did anyone else.
Yeah.
You've got to be consistent. So I have a ton of experience in that.
Thank you.
So as you can probably guess from the question, we are in the midst of school and municipal. A bunch of contracts expired June 30th, so we're in.
June 30 backwards or?
2025, correct. So we're in month two of the new fiscal year where we have unions operating without contracts. Some being closer than others, some conversations have started, but.
Okay.
Thought that was important as the point person, not just necessarily in the room. So thank you for that. Bill, you can ask question three or four. I don't mind whichever one you wish to take. Paris, I know you have a specific affinity for number five, so.
Okay. Well, I'll start with three. This is kind of your 2020 hindsight question. What would you say was one of the highest-profile public issues that you had to handle in your role as town manager or a similar situation? And what was the outcome of it? And now that you can look back, what would you do differently, if anything?
Yeah, there's an obvious one. I've just got to be a little careful what I say.
Yeah, you are being recorded.
It's a personnel issue. We had a former police chief that turned out to be, if you will, an alcoholic. He was accused of being a domestic violence person as well, so it was a very difficult situation, very public situation, public wanting to know a lot of information, legally, you know, me and the town not being allowed to provide a lot of information. The situation worked out definitely as well as it could have. It took a little longer than I would have liked, for sure. My only regret in there is that I wished I could have switched a little bit more over to helping his family, his wife and two kids, more than the town, but I knew that wasn't my job, so I tried to do both. I tried to, you know, do it really carefully. You know, we're still on speaking terms, but he's got a difficult life, but that unfortunately, when your police chief is arrested, I had to order him to be handcuffed once. That becomes a very public event, and I hope it's not something you ever have to go through.
I hope so too. Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
All right. This is, I think, a pretty important one. Can you describe how the working relationship with an acting town manager, what sort of relationship they need to have with the select board to be the most effective? Essentially, how are you going to work with us?
It shouldn't be significantly different than your permanent town manager. I was saying to someone a little earlier, I'm used to having a 10-year focus as town manager and as finance director, and I'm wondering if that would need to change on an interim assignment, so that things over the next six to 12 months might take more of an important role because you've got someone else coming in to deal with the longer-term focus. But communication's always important. It's, you know, it's overstated, but it's also underrated. You know, you can't always be on the same exact page, but you really shouldn't have any horrific surprises at the wrong time. So you and I can disagree about something, but it's certainly never a reason to be disagreeable or for anything other than to be very professional about it. I always viewed my job as, you know, protecting the town, protecting the board, and in protecting the board, making sure I brought as much information, no matter what my feelings on the topic were, so you could make the best decision for the community, because the board had a responsibility I did not. And I always, I saw other town managers slant things and bring partials, you know, solutions that they wanted. I don't like that. You know, you'd hear everything that I know, basically.
I maybe want to ask a quick follow-up on that, which is, you will keep us from stuffing our landmines, though, right?
I won't plant any. I do my best, but, you know, you have a certain, and it's up to also the temperament of the board. I worked for a board that liked meeting between meetings, and I worked for one chair and one board that absolutely refused to meet between meetings, anyone. So that's harder.
Yeah.
You know, it's really up to the temperament of your board and how much communication we can do, and, you know, there's nothing wrong with meeting in between meetings, and you still keep well abreast of open meeting law, just exchange information. So I do my best.
Okay.
Can I just ask a follow-up there?
Sure.
In terms, in your opinion, in your experience, because we do have meetings only every other week.
Yeah.
If you had your way, how would you best keep us informed in between meetings to make sure we are all on the same page, not only with you, but with each other, and not suffering from a game of telephone?
Yeah, the tough part is the open meeting law. You know, the best answer is I'd like to email you all things, but sometimes that wouldn't be ethical or appropriate. So you'd have to develop a, you know, as a chair, vice chair kind of thing, and then just rely on your colleagues. If it's something that's really important, you know, through the chair, we find out a way to let you know and keep abreast, you know, through town council of any tricky open meeting law. But open meeting law does not encourage good communication. It just doesn't.
That's a good point.
You made five votes for that one, that comment. Sorry.
Yes. Paris, you're next, and then Anthea's going to take number six.
So we have a number of long-term strategic initiatives in place. This is number five. In front of us right now, you know, we have some fiscal issues. We're trying to put the next plan in place, which likely includes an override in the spring. We're implementing CPA for the first time as a community. We have housing projects. We have large capital projects. So how do you think an interim town manager, and what would your approach be? Because in Redding, you were there for obviously a long time, and a lot of these projects you probably saw through completion. So how do you think about the role an interim manager would play of supporting our board or other boards and committees in their progress, but at the same time, you know, understanding that these are initiatives that are, that are live and that have been, you know, in flight for in some cases, a number of years?
Part of the answer to that is to understand the relationship between you and/or other boards in town. Some communities are very pyramid structured, where the select board tells everyone else what to do. Some are very, very flat, where boards and committees pretty much do whatever they want. So you'd have to understand that in order to sort of behave appropriately, but, you know, my experience, it's more like the latter. And in that case, there's no, there's no experience other than getting, you know, to know all the boards and committees that are important. You've got to sit down. You've got to go to their meetings, certainly not all of them, but you've got to get to know the chair, the vice chair, and understand, have them understand you're there should anything be needed. You certainly work through the staff, but not every board or committee that I've experienced has a staff liaison, so sometimes it just is either the board of select board or the town manager. So it's really customized to the individual boards. You know, and I think you, as a board, will have to decide the priorities of what is too much of a bandwidth here for someone who's going to be here for a short amount of time. Is there such a thing? And that's not going to be an easy question to answer, and it's not one you'll answer until it happens. And at some point, you may just say, "Okay, this one has to be more relaxed." The most difficult thing that I think you'll have is to try to figure out whether you need to put the brakes on anything or not until you have full-time, you know, number two positions, top two positions. It's a very hard thing to do, but it's something you have to be aware of, because worse than not proceeding is to proceed badly, and you don't want that. So, you know, I have a sense of your priorities, but it's from the outside, you know, and you'd have to clearly help me.
And if I have a follow-up?
Sure.
And maybe, you know, your resume didn't detail your experience in Concord, so it would just be helpful to understand a little bit about the role you played there and, you know, what the community was facing last, you know, year, year and a half, that you were able to, you know, support that select board or that town meeting or other boards in accomplishing.
I was largely involved with the staff at the beginning, and then the finance committee and the select board. The select board and the finance committee worked pretty closely together. They, like any community, they were facing budget issues. It wasn't necessarily override, although it was coming around the corner, but they just changed some financial practices, and I became extremely involved with the finance committee. I made a presentation at town meeting for their middle school. My background is debt, so I was, you know, good at financing a project like that. But again, kind of an open door, realizing I was generally only working 20 or 25 hours a week.
And your role was interim town?
Shared interim finance director.
Shared interim finance director?
Yeah. So the woman I shared it with was a CPA, and she took more of the accounting side, if you will, and I took more of the finance.
Finance and planning, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Anthea's going to go next. This is our vice chair, Anthea Brady.
Hi. Nice to meet you.
Apologies for being late. I had something else this afternoon. Nice to meet you. How would you approach maintaining a working relationship between the town and our public school department?
In Redding, I didn't have a lot of experience with many superintendents. We had really stability in the position, so it was kind of a natural thing. We just knew each other. You know, during my 16 years working there, the vast majority of that was under one superintendent, then he retired, and I had a one-year overlap with his successor, who's still there. So I don't have a lot of experience with a revolving door of superintendents, but you've got to get to know each other. John and I used to have breakfast once every week, maybe once every two weeks, because it's really important, like in life, you want to get to know the person under normal circumstances, so when the stressful things come, you can already talk to them. So I, I think something as often as, you know, a breakfast every couple of weeks, even for an interim town manager, would be important, and then, you know, you let the superintendent sort of dictate the policy. I developed a really good relationship with the Concord superintendent when I was there, even though I wasn't technically working on the school side, but, you know, as an outsider, you provide a sounding board for people. You know, what did you used to think about this? What did you do about that? So sometimes a superintendent is thrilled to just have someone to talk to, I found. So, you know, I would welcome the opportunity, and if superintendent doesn't feel like communicating, well, we'll have to deal with that. There's ways.
Yes.
Want to take the next one as well?
Yep.
So Winchester's residents are very familiar with our situation and political process, and probably unless you've been watching our town meetings, more familiar than you'd be coming in. But at the same time, having that outsider fresh perspective, it brings fresh eyes to a given place or organization, and you might perceive things that we don't. So what, coming into that, would you see as your greatest strengths and greatest, oh, sorry, see as our greatest strengths and greatest challenges? I changed the question completely. Put them one last.
Can I answer however you want?
About, I think it was about five or six years ago, a couple of us were invited over from Redding to meet with your override committee, so 2020-ish. I don't remember exactly.
18, maybe? 18, 19?
19, 20, something like that.
18 and voted in early 19.
So we met, I can't remember, downstairs, I think, had a nice discussion, went through, because Redding had just successfully passed an override 18 months after failing, so we kind of had the full gamut of experience, and it was our second override ever. So we shared all our wisdom, and then I foolishly at the end asked a question. "So are you thinking of doing one in a year?" Because this was December of next fall. "Are you going to have a special election?" "Oh, no, we're going to do it in the spring." "Oh, so 18 months?" "Oh, no, in April." And I was like, "So you haven't talked to anyone in the community, and you're doing an override in April?" "Oh, sure. $10 million, no problem. It passed." So I learned the lesson that, you know, when you have experience in one town, it doesn't necessarily translate perfect to the next. So some of my Redding experiences will be helpful to you, and some will be totally unique to Winchester. And again, knowing other town managers and other towns will help. I think you're the same as every other community in the sense that your biggest challenge right now is money. You know, there's lots of other reasons you want the money, and that's really important to different groups in town, but if you don't have it, none of it's going to get done. So if, you know, if you're serious about an override in the spring, you don't have to start talking about it until December, apparently, but, you know, it is, considering you're in the process of hiring a town manager, finance is going to be tricky. I was saying to Michelle, "So you're going to have to hire someone that's probably going to have to build a budget," because the chances of you having a town, a full town manager in place in time to do that are slim.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, I could do it. I could do it collaboratively, but it wouldn't be the same as what a full-time town manager might do. So that'd be a tricky topic, but, you know, finances, I think, are your biggest challenge, and then right behind it is, you know, social media 24/7. And I don't, I know it's your responsibility and not a town manager's to sort of keep your ear out there and ear on things, but you can't possibly hear it all. So I don't know how the organization as a whole can keep its finger on the town's pulse as well as it needs to. I just don't think you can. Your strengths are clearly your community, your community engagement, your community involvement. You have some incredibly talented and, you know, very strong volunteers. You need to make sure you leverage that and don't have them fight with each other and burn off steam that way. They need to learn to work together. So in Redding, we tried our best to sort of knock down the silos. It's, it wasn't human nature sometimes. People wanted to live in a silo, but we just tried to, you know, it was easy with employees, it was harder with the volunteers, and just say, "Look, this committee over here sees it a little differently than you do, so maybe you should just at least listen." Some boards wouldn't meet with each other. You know, you have to just try your hardest not to waste energy, especially at a time like this.
Could I do a quick follow-up?
Oh, yeah.
So you mentioned, you know, most likely building the budget and not having a new town manager in time to build that budget. What would be your approach to handoff, knowing that the new town manager's going to come in, they'll come to our town, our spring town meeting with the budget, and need to sort of be up to speed on the things that have happened in the past few months in those critical areas?
I retired on March 1st of a few years ago, and that new town manager was hired more or less February 1st, so we overlapped, maybe not quite that much. We overlapped about a month. But I wanted to build the budget, so it wasn't his fault fully, and then I totally handed it off to him with my availability. So it'd probably be similar here. You know, it's a little different, because an interim might not build the same budget the way a full-time, long-term town manager would. I don't know. I think I tend to do what I do anyways. But you're going to have to hire an interim that is open line of communication to the next town manager for quite some time. Assuming you hire someone from the outside, if you do, that are just going to, you know, be as new at as I or an interim would, they're going to need help, as much as they can get from you, from whoever it is that sits in the interim chair. I still talk to Redding on a regular basis, giving them help, you know. Just, I sent them a link from 23 years ago last week. "Oh, you weren't, none of you were here then, but this is the fact." So you just have to keep the door open. And again, when you're in a situation like that, you know, will you have an override? Won't you have an override? How do you build a budget? You know, that'll be a discussion point, I'm sure. So I'd anticipate the next interim to spend a lot of time with your finance committee, both in meetings and maybe privately, to say, you know, "What's the best course of action here in public?"
And we do have a state-of-the-town committee, which I think is probably not as readily published, but that was convened in May, June?
May.
May, to look at, it's sort of like it's the override planning committee, so it has, Paris chairs it, but it has capital planning, planning board, FinCom, school committee, six at-large residents, town manager comptroller. So we meet but every other week. Superintendent, yeah. So it's.
That's good. That's convened under the select board, so all five, all five of us are members of it? That's good.
So I think just, you know, that budget process will be probably starting at that larger table, and then obviously distilling down to things like FinCom and select board.
And our comptroller.
And the comptroller.
And our comptroller, who is a veteran.
Yeah, I just met her before I came in. I've had experience in the past where we've debated having two budgets to go to town meeting. That's a tough discussion. We did that during COVID. We wanted to wait till the last minute, because no one knew what was going on, but having two budgets and identifying employees that may or may not have jobs is a very, very tough thing.
Yeah.
And especially in schools, you want to protect, you know, the anonymity as much as possible. But sometimes, depending on how, you know, how do the voters feel, that's maybe what it takes. That's what voters want to see. "What am I voting for?"
Yep.
And it's easy when you're voting for new things. It's harder when you're voting to keep things.
Yes. Okay. So Mike, I'm going to give you number eight, and then we'll decide as a board if we think we want to ask Bob about financial management, which is question nine, but.
Okay.
If you could ask question eight, Mike, that'd be great.
Okay. Our citizens expect their officials to be available and accessible. How do you interact with citizens, and what concrete actions have you taken in previous jobs to improve direct services and the day-to-day communication with citizens?
When I was hired, there was almost no such thing as social media and email. So my communication was old-fashioned. It was called office hours. That quickly had to change. You know, residents had 24/7 access to me in theory. In practice, I wasn't going to answer them at one in the morning, generally. But you have to meet people where they are. You know, there's no one style and no one method that's going to answer everyone's needs, so you've got to just offer an array. Lunch with the senior center, you know, meetings at the library, select board office hours we had in Redding. They discontinued them during COVID, and it just started up again. You have to meet people where they are, and unfortunately, you're going to get low turnouts in anything you provide, and when there's a problem, you're going to get high turnouts, and then you're going to try to think, "How could I have, you know, communicated with all these people better?" all these people better? So I think any communication strategy and style has to evolve. It can't be the same even as a year ago. And I don't know what works best in Winchester. You have pretty good news coverage online, I found. Some communities don't have any at all. So you probably have to, you know, as my predecessor said, you know, Bob, you could write the residents a message, wrap it around a rocket, throw it through the window, and half of them wouldn't get it. You just have to be flexible. And you have to be consistent. You can't tell one group one thing and then the other group something else, because that'll get back to you.
Yep.
And the beauty of me and my style is, I have such a small mind, I can only think of one thing. So I don't think of many things, many options, to tell people different stories.
Okay. So before we, okay, let me ask the board, do we feel that we want to hear more about financial management experience that would be reassuring to our residences, residents? Do we think we've heard that? I'm happy to ask the candidate to expound.
We've heard a little bit of that already, yeah.
Yeah, that's my sense, but what do people think?
I don't like spending money. That's probably the only answer you need. You have to be really careful when you spend money. My, my one regret when I left Redding was telling the then-board and my successor, it was just after COVID was easing up, if you think back to March of 2022, I said, why don't you have a good time? We got a lot of money, why don't you get out and spend some of it? They haven't stopped.
Yeah.
Once that's opened, it's tough. So 20 years of my, you know, careful spending has slightly been unraveled. As an example, and you'll be a little surprised, I think, the town used $6 million in the current fiscal year to balance the budget of free cash. I'd never heard anything like that. They didn't want to do an override. They had 20 million in free cash, so let's use six.
Yep.
Wow.
So I don't like to spend money, because I understand Prop 2 and 1/2. I understand, you know, a CIP community like you and Redding are similar, 90-10, 95-5.
Yep.
You know, we're not Burlington, where money just rolls in the door.
Yep.
So you've got to be careful.
I'm going to let the board, maybe Paris has one, maybe Bill, but ask some additional maybe follow-up questions, and then we're going to make, at the wrong clock. In about five, six minutes, we're going to sort of do some wrap-up, which is around, you know, learning curve and hitting the ground running, but I'm going to turn it over. I'll start with Paris, then go to Bill, and then Anthea, if people have some additional follow-ups they want to ask, and we'll go back to the script in six, eight minutes.
It actually goes back a little bit to my previous question. So, so obviously, we are undertaking a visioning, you know, piece of the state of the town, right? What level of services do people want to support? I don't think anybody's talking about gold-plated services that you might find in a community that has a huge amount of commercial revenue. But I think there is a spread of opinion there. So how do you think about, I mean, I appreciate the view you may personally have, but more importantly, that Redding, as a highly residential community, also had for a very long time. How do you think about how that might inform the interim role? Just understanding that, obviously, the community has to debate a view of their own philosophy of what level of tax and what level of services they want to support. And also that, that the town manager's budget is going to be in flight, but is actually voted on at spring town meeting, which would be in May. And so, you know, if, if we don't have a permanent town manager by then, we would, I think we would probably think something went wrong. So I guess, how do you think about supporting whatever view may come out? We all may ourselves disagree somewhat with each other versus the way you might want to run it if you were the permanent town manager?
It's, it's really difficult to sense how supportive the community as a whole will be towards ideas, even when you're just meeting with, you know, even if you're meeting with hundreds of people.
Right.
That's the real trick. Again, my $10 million lesson from your last override is, you know, Winchester will be very open-minded. I would, I would tend to be a lot more optimistic that services you want to provide as this group will be, you know, funded, but you still need to prioritize them. You still need to decide, you know what? These 10 things are great, but these three things are going to be nice and they're going to be at the end of the list. And if we can get to them someday, that's great. You also have to philosophically discuss, and I've had this discussion with superintendents, you know, one of them was, I asked a former superintendent a couple backs, if you could institute a program or a service for students for one or two years, but you knew it would have to be discontinued, would you do it? And he said, yes, absolutely, because all I have to do is positively influence one student for that to be worthwhile. And my answer in the town was, absolutely not. I would not do that. Even though I could influence, you know, a senior or some other person in a positive way, I don't think it's right to provide services, knowing that it's temporary, unless you say they're temporary.
It's a sustainability piece.
Yes, I'm very big on sustainability. And, you know, you can sustain something that you didn't expect to by making other decisions in the future and say, you know, we put this thing in for two or three years, it's so good, something else has to go. And that's fine. But you're, and again, that gets, that gets to the conflict of me thinking 10 years and this position maybe needing a shorter-term focus. Certainly, the committee you're discussing is a 10-plus-year focus, though. Thank you.
Bill?
This kind of goes back a little bit to what I asked about earlier in terms of working with the board. I suspect there were times in your career, and there might be times in the interim position, where we think something is a good idea, but you think something is a terrible idea. How would you work with us, you know, to, to make sure that, you know, everybody understood the different perspectives and understood all the facts and navigated through those, you know, not unlikely to occur situations where one or all five members of the Select Board, you know, see something very differently from you and you think it's a, you know, you have a lot more experience in municipal government than I do, for example, but I'm still a Select Board member.
Correct.
So how do you help me? How do we work together in those situations?
That's interesting, because I don't honestly ever remember being in a meeting and having the board surprise me like that. Sometimes they're surprised which way the three-to-two vote goes. But I've never been in a situation where the board was so ill-informed that they made a decision that wasn't rational. So it's hard to answer that question. Again, if you provide consistent, full information, and especially if you have board members that, you know, want to talk about it off-camera, and just as long as they don't with each other, that's fine. So I've certainly had examples with board members having a strong opinion in one direction and after having talked about it a couple times with me, changing their mind. And as town manager, I have to say, I rarely had very strong feelings about things, other than not wasting effort and money, when it just seemed like a waste. But that was pretty rare, because usually it was exploratory and that's not a waste. But it's really, you know, you've got to give people the opportunity to learn from each other. And our boards were pretty good about listening and saying, you know, I thought completely the opposite when I sat down, I'm going to vote with you. It's, it's kind of nice when you hear that, because it means people are listening and people are learning. But as, I don't, I don't think it's the town manager's role to have strong opinions and argue with you. Unless it's, you know, if you have to call a sidebar and say, wait, there's a legal issue here you don't know about, certainly that's happened. But that's about the only kind of thing.
Okay. Anthea? And then Mike?
Yeah, so this, this may have come up under the first question, so just let me know if it did, and you can give me your 32nd, you know, very quick response, but we're facing our town manager and some other sort of employees who've been here for a long time, reaching retirement. So how would you handle this sort of transition and turnover from a staffing and HR perspective in, in Town Hall? Both in terms of we may be hiring some positions through the office, but also there's, you know, just, just change and, you know, some things where there's people coming in with, you know, not as much background and things like that.
Yeah, one of the real challenges for someone from outside to come into a situation where there is going to be some pressure on finances, is to try to figure out how to sort out, how much money should I not be spending now? So, you know, one of the thoughts that would be in the back of my mind is hiring freeze. You know, I don't know it well enough to know that's important, but I'd at least have to have conversations with all the department heads and say, look, you've got an override potentially coming up, you've got a new town manager coming in, let's just be cautious about what we do. If you have a vacancy, let's be really thoughtful before you fill it. You know, police and fire usually take years to fill positions, so it's hard to not do those, especially if you have some kind of safety staffing level. But other things, you just have to be cautious. And I think that's true in any town at any time, but it might be especially true right now. In terms of HR in general, you know, you have a good HR director, he and I met through email last week. And you just have to, again, have an open channel of communications. I don't know what your labor relations are like, I don't know what your unions are like. HR is probably the hardest part of the job, generally. If it goes bad, it's, it's awful. And if it goes good, it means it wasn't bad today. So you just have to, again, get to know people. I've had employees crying in my office. I had one apologizing that she had screwed up so much and she knew she had to be fired, but she was still mad at her boss. So when you develop an open and honest relationship with all the employees, I think that's what works the best for any town manager. I don't think that's easy to do, though. I think it's especially harder, I grew up in the organization, so I was everyone's friend at first, if you will. Harder to hire a town manager from the outside and have that same relationship, but you've got to have the honesty, at least with the department heads. I also had an office door that was literally open to any employee at any time. I did not have a list of eight or 10 employees that were allowed to see me. Anyone was allowed to come in if I was free and talk to me, and I think that's important.
Okay. Mike, any follow-up?
Yeah. Bob, one of the things we're pretty good at is building things, and we're not so good at maintaining them. And today, we opened a brand-new school. It's beautiful, really kind of a flagship kind of elementary school, and part of our task, I think, is to start with every new building and, you know, look at how we're going to maintain it, because it's not going to be new forever. What's your experience with, and not so much experience as your philosophy about strategic maintenance of capital investments?
When I started in Redding, there was a capital plan that spent about $25,000 for this town and $25,000 for the schools total, because there was no money.
Yep.
The next budget, the first real budget I did, we had 5% of all the revenues were capital and debt. So I developed formulas and procedures to protect your capital investment. Once you get the cash flow stream, then you can start setting up expectations and starting to set up, you know, preventative maintenance or whatever it is.
Yep.
But, but part of it is, just like I faced in Concord, you know, people didn't want to ask for things, because they had no expectation of getting it, until they found out, no, I was, I was serious. They said, no, you will get, I don't know if you'll get the money, but someone will. So I think number one is, provide employees an expectation that what they see they need, they might even get.
Yep.
Because the employees will know. You know, facilities people, building people know. The harder part, schools are relatively easy to take care of, because parents and everyone sees them. It's a lot harder to take care of your water and sewer underground.
Right.
You know, no one's going to see it until it's really a problem.
Yep.
But I was very, very dedicated to infrastructure, especially the stuff that people didn't care about and didn't see.
Yep.
Because I didn't want to have bad surprises. Because, again, that's protecting your community, that's one way you do it.
Thank you, Wilson.
I have a very quick yes-or-no potential question.
All right.
I know Redding is not a CPA community, but Concord is. Did you have any interaction with CPA committee there, WCCP, the SLAC board, town meeting?
Before I started, so almost 20 years ago, they brought CPA to the town and it lost by less than 100 votes, and they never brought it back in Redding.
Right.
They've discussed it, every few years they discuss it.
But in Concord, did you have any interaction with that group?
No, I, I knew the people that did it, and I understood the rules of, you know, different allowed spending, but I didn't really do anything directly with it now.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to wrap up and then leave some time for you for questions for us. So the wrap-up questions, and you've probably hit on some of these, are kind of two sides. You know, what do you, what do you see as your steepest learning curve in moving into this role as an interim? And where do you, where are you confident you're going to hit the ground running?
The hardest part will be, you know, two people that I don't know come into the office and tell me two different things, who's right? You know, I don't know the people, so I won't have the background in terms of, well, this person always sits in this seat at town meeting and always complains about these things. I won't know any of that. So I'll have to just be a sponge and assume that everything I'm hearing is right. And it'll take a while to figure out. And, you know, that's where I'll rely on the board and the staff if it's really important. 80 to 90% of most resident issues don't rise to that level, I don't think. It's just generally, yes, I heard you, and yes, sometimes government is stupid. Let's move on, let's try to fix this. I think that'd be the hardest thing, is I don't know your town, I don't know the people in the town, more importantly. I think it's also true that I don't know your employees, very few of them. Again, Redding seemed to be almost in a different town manager group and community group than Winchester, even though we're not far apart. For some reason, I group Winchester with Belmont and Lexington, for instance, and I group Redding with everything east of Winchester. So that would be the hardest part, is, you know, the nuts and bolts of the job I know how to do, it's the people and, you know, their angle and their, you know, their understanding, their full knowledge of an issue or not.
Do you want to talk about where you're going to hit the ground running? And then I think we'll turn it over for your questions for us.
Where would I hit it running? Hopefully with my feet, but not my head. I don't know, the most important thing, and it kind of leads into the little bullet point there, do I have any reservations? Again, I don't know your people. As a courtesy to the board, and it just seemed like common sense, I came a few minutes early and talked to a couple people, but I really haven't. I couldn't possibly imagine accepting this role without having discussions with your department heads. I don't even know who your department heads are, but, you know, the usual police chief, fire chief, TPW director. I would want to understand your organization better than I do, to see if I really fit. And I know that's why you're here also, to see the fit, but I can't know that only from talking to you. I have to understand what the employees need. And make no mistake about it, the employees as a whole right now are having a difficult time with this situation, no matter what anyone says. Having, you know, the loss of the top two people, long-term people in an organization is very tough. You know, you don't have to look far to find communities that have not handled that situation well. And, you know, you're a great community, you're a great organization, but you will have turnover if you don't handle it well. And hiring municipal employees is not getting easier. You have some good ones, you have some really long-term ones, and the cost of turnover is enormous these days.
Good point. Do you have any questions for us?
Has the board discussed specific differences between an interim or acting town manager and a real town manager? You and I talked slightly about that, Michelle, I said, knew something from the Redding charter, but my understanding from your backgrounds as a community is, your acting town manager is a town manager. So there's like no real difference, it's just how long you're going to be here.
Correct.
And in the past, sometimes, maybe even quite often, your acting or interim has become the town manager. And that will not be the case with, if it's with me. So it really is, you know, my biggest question is, what is the role compared to a full town manager? And is the board, have they had a discussion, are they out in one mind of that? It doesn't have to be spelled out, and it's not a recipe for failure if it isn't, but it would be helpful to know.
So I would say, has the board spelled that out? No. Does the board, I did share with them that you had shared from Redding, some of the guardrails that was, that were put in place for the acting. We haven't shared that with the full board yet, because I think we hadn't necessarily pivoted to this outside role at that time. But I think the board agrees we need to put some boundaries on, you know, Anthea's question on hiring, or your thought about hiring freeze, right? Hiring strategically. We've had those conversations as a board, but exactly the duties and boundaries for the interim, we've not gone down that path in a detailed way, beyond understanding we need to have one. We want to make sure there's time and, you know, tail and overlap for who we would have as a permanent. And ideally, we'd like to have that position filled by the end of the calendar year.
Right.
That's our goal. But I would, I would invite the board to weigh in on whatever else we have discussed, but we just haven't, I don't think we've written it down in such a way that says, here are your 15 marching orders, but I'll defer to the rest.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that there is not necessarily a limit to the position, but more of just a prioritization of certain things. As you heard, we're in kind of the state-of-the-town phase now, evaluating our fiscal future, and, you know, that's a priority. So we'll be discussing other priorities, but going into town meeting and, you know, in the fall, you know, we've got a lot to do in a short period of time, so it, the role itself won't be, won't be limited in a sense, but there will be certain things that will be prioritized from the Select Board.
I agree with everything Mike just said. I would say, and it's not, to Michelle's point, it's not at the level of depth of saying, these are the, you know, core responsibilities and these are, you know, reserved for full-time. It's not, that has not been something we've talked about, but really partnering with the Select Board, partnering with this group, and the other senior leadership of our town to, staff leadership of the town, to stabilize, you know, our operations, make sure that all of our projects and things continue, you know, apace, make sure our staff is in a good spot. I think you've, I'm really pleased with the degree to which you've highlighted that with the degree to which you've highlighted that in your comments of making sure our staff feels cared for and protected. And then, as Mike said, get us through fall town meeting and at least the early preparation of a budget. I'm speaking for myself on that, but I would guess that a lot of my colleagues agree with it.
Ditto, ditto, ditto. What I'll add is, I think that an interim coming in at this point in time for our town could have a lot of advantages to it. As we have to work to build that stability that I think you've already touched upon and that Mike was mentioning, that we want to make sure we're not overly investing in long-term issues as we're transitioning to a new full-time town manager, but as we're also approaching the need for an override. Those two necessities almost mesh very well, I think, to one another because we're being forced to ask those same questions simultaneously. And so I would hope to have an interim town manager who is bringing those questions, helping us, you know, look to places where we need to be honest about what we can and cannot do, what needs to be done right away, what we can triage. And an interim town manager who, because they don't look to have a long-term future with the town, isn't afraid to be honest with us about those issues. I mean, one of the great things about when you are a short timer is you can say whatever you want almost because what are we going to do? And so as we're all working together, I think that the interim town manager will have a very unique opportunity to help us face some realities as they both define what it is they should be focused on and we're defining what the town should be focused on once the interim has been replaced with a full-time town manager.
The only thing I will add, because I agree with what all of my colleagues have said, is I think we also see this as being, we have a lot of balls in the air of things that are coming through the select board and having an interim town manager who's able to, you know, have some autonomy or have, you know, strong background knowledge to be able to run with, as you say, the nuts and bolts and be able to take on these things that our board doesn't have the capacity to sort of insert ourselves into town hall to, you know, start managing, you know, little bits and pieces versus things that an experienced town manager.
I was just going to add, we're not looking to hamstring, we're not looking to have an interim town manager on a short leash, but we're looking to have a town manager who functions as a town manager, to Anthea's point, does all the things, will negotiate union contracts, will, you know, sign off on things, will procure new services, will sign off on contracts. We're not looking to limit. I think if there's, you know, permanent hires, we may want to have a conversation. If we're going to go through some organization or looking at the organization and roles and are we looking at duties, I think we'd want to have some coordination as a board with the interim. But we're not looking to say, you can only do these five things and, you know, you'll be bored by lunchtime. We want a town manager who functions as a town manager. And we, and has, and, you know, we trust has the experience and the perspective to do right by the town.
My biggest takeaway is that you're in a learning and exploring phase. This isn't come in and do these 10 things. If you don't get to the last two, that's okay because I wouldn't be bored. But it's really come in and give us some idea of what else we should do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, and keep the town moving forward, right? I mean, our town residents want to, they've, they want to see, you know, the things they voted on in the past and they continue to, you know, hopefully vote for in the future, yet implement and move along, right? Whether it's projects or, I brought up CPA a couple of times, but that's a perfect example. It was voted on in November of 2024. We're in our pilot round right now. We'll have a full round next year. People want to see progress.
Okay.
More questions from you, Bob, or closing thoughts?
No, just, I appreciate the opportunity. I wish you luck beyond this decision because you're going to need it. The town manager pool isn't robust as it used to be, but the good thing is all you have to do is hire one. And Winchester has a top-notch reputation, so I'm sure you'll see good applicants for it. You know, and you just need to hire someone in the interim that doesn't hurt anything too badly.
We hope to do better than that.
Time will go by fast, though.
Yes.
You know, and the finance and operations, when I started, it used to be 90% of the job. It's still a big number, but people think it's 10. That's the stuff that you only see it if it goes wrong, but it's still important. And to me, that's still the most important role of a town manager is finance and operations. It's just not stuff that the board has to focus on because it shouldn't be being done well. So thank you again.
Thank you for coming in this evening.
Certainly, my pleasure.
Thanks for sharing your thoughts. Gave us all.
Good luck.
Good things to think about. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Just going around quickly, thank you.
It's a pleasure. Thank you, Pauline.
Mr. Fitzgerald, we've introduced ourselves as chair, vice-chair, and then Mike, Bill Paris. We are going to give you maybe five minutes to talk about yourself, your interests, your work as a town manager or acting town manager somewhere. Then we do have some questions, which you have a copy of, and we're going to go around the table. I'll ask the first, then Anthea, then it will be Mike, Bill Paris. We'll somewhat cycle around. You do have a copy of them in front of you. So we'll let you start and then we'll dive in, maybe take five minutes or so, but.
Sure. Well, thank you. Appreciate your commitment to public service. It's not easy. I feel as though, you know, my career has given me an opportunity to really contribute and do things that are so incredible. Takes a lot of time, a lot of patience. I was raised by people that never served in public life, but they worked at the church up the street from where I grew up. My mother was an elementary school teacher. My dad was a salesman for Procter and Gamble. And I guess I'm what you get. I mean, you have that combination. It's about people and it's about really making a difference in the quality of life of a community. Over my years, I've really enjoyed the community building piece. I think it's more need today than ever. I think this elusive sense of community, you know, we have more online things, but it's, it's just really important that we, we build community. And a lot of municipal projects and budgets and, you know, investments really can, can build that foundation for community. And I think that there's a lot more opportunity there and certainly, you know, it's something that I really love to do. So.
So one thing I should sort of off the top, as we were, as we're going down this interim town manager, acting town manager role, I think the board is looking at this as a, you know, four to six-month duration. And then we will in parallel be looking for a permanent town manager. So we're not considering this, this appointment as the launchpad for the full-time. We're going to be vetting candidates and doing a formal search. Want to make that clear with every candidate we talk to this evening. So, okay, so I'm going to start. My first question is, as acting, and this could go back to your former, you know, role as town manager, how would you get to know department heads and other key staff and develop productive and sustain productive relationships with department heads when you're sort of coming in as an outsider and coming in new?
I think it starts with getting to know them sincerely, just sitting down and connecting with them. I think relationships start with sincere level of interest. And my colleagues in public life are people that I care deeply about. I've been asked to marry a couple of them. I've been asked to speak at funerals. And I think that speaks to how sincerely I approach my life, not just my profession. My colleagues in public life, department heads, you know, from folks that push the broom to the folks that lead men and women into, you know, dangerous situations are doing a ever more difficult job. And they need to be heard at times and they need to be affirmed and recognized. I don't, I don't think people really do it for the money, even though compensation is important. I do think that there's a passion and level of connection. I like the idea that, you know, we get a beautiful hall here. I think, you know, last time I had a town hall like this was in Plastow. We had a clock tower and a big hall. Swampscott didn't have that. But I would think pulling them in for holidays or, you know, bringing them all in and saying, hey, you know, we want to, we want everybody to get out of their silos and connect and, you know, have a little bit of a celebration of public service would be very helpful. I've done that for years and I've really tried to, you know, break down the sense that we have the yellow group and the blue group and the red group and the green group.
And specifically for like department heads, so, you know, DPW, police chief, you know, senior, director of the senior center. So what would you do, you know, in that smaller community of town government to build those relationships?
I'd spend a lot of time listening. And, you know, I always would be looking to, you know, have coffee or lunch at least once a week, especially for the big department heads that are really alone. When you're a chief, there aren't really many other chiefs. And, you know, when you have department heads that, you know, have complicated responsibilities, you know, I want to check in on them, but I also need them to. I think it's a two-way street. And I've come to learn that when you have a kitchen cabinet where people can, can help advise you and give you a little bit of support, it's a two-way street. And I think, you know, building those relationships are really important. I'm a flag football coach and I share the same kind of philosophy on the flag football field as I do in workplace. Attitude in relationships, you've got to bring both of those things and they both have to be on point. You have to have wonderful attitudes and you have to have always a sense that you want to make these relationships work and you have to invest in those relationships if you're going to be successful.
Thank you. Next up will be Anthea.
Can you tell us about your experience that you have where you've been the point person on negotiating contracts in your permanent or sort of permanent town manager administrator roles? And then about how many contracts it is that you negotiated?
Sure. I have extensive experience with collective bargaining, contract negotiation. I started initially when I worked for the Essex County Advisory Board. I worked for the chair of the, a board that was made up of 10 mayors and 24 chairman of the boards of selectmen of communities that comprised Essex County. And I negotiated with the teachers' union over Essex Aggie and also the IBCO International Brotherhood of Correctional Offices. And so I was given parameters by the chair and I went and I negotiated those contracts. When I got to Plastow, I negotiated with seven different collective bargaining groups and Swampscott about the same. I was the direct lead negotiator. And, you know, I'd say I'd probably negotiated over 30 collective bargaining contracts. I've done concessionary negotiations. I've done really, I think, really good work in terms of helping to evolve with CDAs that were a little underdeveloped. I've always thought, you know, we're in public service to not just, you know, talk about a COLA. We really want to make sure these contracts help support professional development, even if it's a smaller union. We really want to go in there and look at it and say, how do you build structure? How do you help make sure that there's equity across a number of the contracts? When you have smaller contracts, they don't necessarily get the same advocacy. So I try to go in there, even though I'm representing the town, and I, I've always kind of kept a philosophy that I'm tough but fair. And whereas 80% of the budget or so, 70 to 80% is your personnel costs, you really need to understand those costs. I go to DOR website and I look at usually 15 different peer community contracts before I sit down and negotiate a contract. I've developed really detailed cost of contracts so we know exactly where the value is in contracts. And we start from a basis of really appreciating and understanding what the financial position is of the contracts. And then we look at the town and we try to figure out how to make it all work.
Mike? What is the highest profile public issue with which you've been involved as an acting or interim town manager administrator? And what was the outcome? And what would you do, if anything, differently?
Highest issue? The highest issue was, we got national attention in Swampscott when Governor Baker lived across from town hall. We had national news. Coming to Swampscott every week to check in on protests. We had local media, statewide media, national media. We had folks coming in from out of state with very offensive and terrible, you know, billboards. We had a group of parents that were really upset that we couldn't quiet the demonstration because of the First Amendment right to free speech. And so it became a very difficult issue. We had a lot of frustrated residents who were concerned about protecting children from loudspeakers that were blaring offensive comments. I, I did my best to address some of the concerns in the media. And I talked with reporters both on and off the record to ensure that, you know, there was a real sense that, you know, this was something we were very uncomfortable with. But ultimately, you know, we had an arrest of a blackmail that was investigated. Initially, it was thought that this blackmail punched an 80-year-old woman, but when video was presented to me about a week after the incident, it was clear that he just splashed water on her. He, this woman splashed water on him. He didn't punch her. I called for an independent investigation. We did a report. It lasted six months. It's complicated, but in the end of the day, I think we were able to get to the facts. Sometimes doing the right thing is difficult. But I'm, you know, very confident down to my toes that, you know, we handled that correctly and we made some changes that were for the better.
Just a follow-up on the changes to what? You said you made some changes for?
Yeah, we changed the protocols for how we dealt with mass demonstrations. We put policies in place that frankly helped us better manage, you know, the way we policed some of those events. We had training about report writing. We put body cameras on officers. We, we did a whole number of things that required collective bargaining and a lot of due process.
Okay. Bill, you're next.
Can you describe the working relationship that you see the acting town manager, what they should have with the select board?
I think it should be very professional. I'd like to be collegial and cordial and fun, you know, really. But I do think we're, in some respects, you know, we're, we're the executive branch and we have to lead. It's a conversation that happens all the time. Are we managing or are we leading? And, you know, there are times we have to do both. And we have to share a little bit of that responsibility. I've learned over the years better to kind of figure that out when we want to lead. I can certainly lead. I just, I think it's probably more effective when we, we all understand who's going to actually be best leading certain issues. I was impressed with the board. I watched through town meeting. It's great to see you all get up and lead your warrant. You know, I think that's the role of the select board. But there are times where I think, you know, the town manager does need to step in and really go over a few of the operational issues and speak to the nuts and bolts of town administration.
In this same vein, obviously, we have to do our due diligence. This is a very important role for our town. And I had your name before I had your resume. And so I did my bit of research and I couldn't help but read articles about the end of your term as town manager in Swampscott. And if I read correctly, it said that one reason why you stepped down from that position was because you had reached a relationship that was no longer productive with that select board. Can you please explain what that was, how it came about? Because that's not really something that we can afford to have right now.
Yeah, I think, you know, look, I mentioned earlier, relationships and attitudes really are critical. You know, a person that elected that really had an agenda. You know, a person got elected that really had an agenda and rather than kind of deal with that, I decided that it would be best to step away. I was coming to the end of eight years. I was in the process of renegotiating a contract extension. I spent six months negotiating an extension, but things changed. It's democracy. I could get into all sorts of, you know, details, but the, the bottom line is people elected some, a person, she had an agenda. I decided that it was best to respectfully just negotiate a separation and end of employment in the way that best I think supported good government and frankly, my family. My, you know, it's not something I would ever really want to do. It's just sometimes you're in a situation where it can be very difficult.
Remind me again, how big is Swambskut's select board? How many members?
Five members.
No, it was five or three. Okay, thank you. Back to you, Bill, if you had a follow-up. Otherwise, we'll go to Paris.
No, I think that's it for number four right now.
Okay. So, all right.
Yeah, thank you. So the town Winchester, we have in front of us right now a number of longer-term strategic initiatives. And so, you know, a few of those are, we have, you know, some fiscal planning that we have to get done and we're, you know, aiming for getting the next plan in place in 2026, which potentially include an override, likely would include an override. We have a number of capital projects in flight, big ones. We're implementing the CPA here, which we haven't had and we voted in last year and so we're in the process of implementing that. We have housing projects. So how do you think an interim town manager can sort of enable these initiatives and projects that, many of which have been in flight for, you know, a long time and we have a lot of people working on them? And at the same time, sort of support them, but also understand that, you know, these are, those are long-term strategic things the town is trying to do?
You know, I took a look at your budget and I did take a look at the capital plan and certainly, you know, it's clear to me, you know, there's some, there's some work there. It's not unfamiliar. When I got to Swambskut, Swambskut, you know, was, you know, two years prior, they voted down a, a new school project and they had years of tax increases and, you know, they just didn't really have that financial game plan that, that really was built on, on a common understanding. You've done some great work. Your budget's great. Beth has done a commendable job, you know, getting a number of initiatives going. I, I do think there's some fundamentals that have to really be addressed as an interim. I do see really sitting down with the finance boards, the finance committee, the select board, the school committee, and, and really, you know, getting a sense of where, where have we been over the last 10 years and where are you going? Department of Revenue has some great information in the municipal database. In short order, you can see how your budget has changed and where it has changed. And you can tie that back to decisions that you've made. You can look at where your free cash stabilization and all of the really core fundamentals of municipal finance are. And you can really get a baseline set so that everybody understands, look, if, if you are trying to meet levels of service and it's going to cost tax, you can really start, you know, helping people understand that. But you can also look at, you know, where are you with peer communities so that everybody has a crystal clear idea of, you know, are you paying high in some areas and paying a little low in others? And, and do you really want to balance a budget? Not a glamorous word, but when you think about all of the priorities that, you know, you have as a busy community, you know, there are probably some, some real important opportunities just over the next few months. I will tell you, you know, it's a, it's a complicated responsibility to come in and try to see the structural deficits that you built into your budget. It's a, like, those are gonna, those are going to be complicated to just understand. You've got a couple of years of, of kind of building a few, you know, things in there to kind of meet a level of service that people need. And so you're doing, I think, a good job trying to take care of things, but, you know, that override, you know, is going to be important. I've always thought, you know, before you go to the override, you really, you know, you really have to prove that, you know, these are the needs and, and this is how careful we're going to be with municipal finance, just to give everybody a sense that, you know, we're looking at every opportunity. As an interim, I think, you know, my skillset, my background, I think, could, could help put the 10-year financial forecast together and, and really give everybody a sense that, you know, there's a roadmap for a, a future that is much more financially steady. And I think that's probably what folks are going to want to hear.
Any follow-up, Paris?
No.
Okay. We'll go back to Anthea and then Mike, you're going to get seven.
Yep.
So how would you work to maintain a working relationship between the town and the public school department?
I would love to have weekly meetings with the superintendent and the finance team and the school department and the town. I think in Swambskut, we had tri-chair meetings, you know, almost every week during budget development, but certainly every other week, you know, when we were looking to build a consolidated elementary school, take three neighborhood schools and make a new one difficult in a town of three square miles. We needed to be really working hand in hand. I think, you know, a lot of the critical issues here are, the financial issues are going to really need a strong chorus of municipal officials really, you know, identifying the critical issues. And I'd see just as, as an interim, helping the, the team really articulate those pressure points. And, you know, but superintendent's not going to have to go looking for me. Certainly would be showing up with coffee and looking to really get a sense of where, where I can be of help and support.
Mike, you've got number seven.
Thank you. Winchester residents are more familiar with our situation and political process than you will be. At the same time, an outsider brings fresh eyes to a given place or institution and may perceive things that we do not. What do you see as our greatest strengths and greatest challenges here at Winchester?
I'll start with your strengths. I think you have a wonderful sense of community, I think. You have a beautiful downtown. I think you've got great natural resources. You've got some, Vels is gorgeous and, you know, there's a really strong quality of life and you have an active citizenry. I do think like every generation, you know, you know, there's a sense of how you are going to invest and really keep faith with taking care of your buildings and your properties and, and thinking about, you know, your financial stability. The challenges, I think, in your budget, we talked, you know, I think everybody gets it, you know, I'm not going to, you know, go through it. But to me, I see that as an opportunity because like I've, I've traveled around. I've been a town manager and a town administrator. I've, I've worked in city government. I've, you know, I've looked at the budget lines. I've seen, I've seen the changes. Some are up by a pretty interesting amount. Some are down. Some are, and so I, I already, I can see the breadcrumbs of where I think I would help just start to show folks, you know, where the opportunities might be. Your management letters from your audit, I know you have an audit committee, but there's, is a pretty simple but complicated item that they've addressed two years in a row. And that's, they really want the town to, bless you, develop financial policies and, and really stick to them. You know, there's all sorts of financial policies. There's, you know, financial policies for your, your funds and financial policies for how you develop a budget and how you really support, you know, the best practices. And I think some of those things are probably important to implement while you begin the conversation about, you know, getting a structural issue addressed with, with the community.
Thank you. All right. Bill, I want your number eight.
Sure. So our public here at Winchester expect a lot of our officials and they certainly expect us to be available and accessible and to answer questions and to, you know, make sure that they understand why we're doing what we're doing. So how do you interact with citizens? Not just the elected officials, but certainly town meeting members, board and committee members, but also just the parents, the people on the street? To make sure that they understand what's going on, how we're serving them? And what actions have you taken in your previous roles to improve the direct services to those people and with that, the day-to-day communication that they receive?
So I've, I've always tried to engage citizens. It's one of my favorite parts of working in local government, helping people is, you know, affirming when you can help a family deal with a loved one that has needs that can only be met by a state agency. You know, that's a wonderful way to be supportive. It doesn't say in a town manager's job description that that's what you have to do, but, you know, you're, you're a conduit of, of helping citizens get the need that they deserve from their local government. I, I've served for eight years on a $10 million anti-poverty agency. I volunteered for that. Not just because it was awesome to be on a board, it was because, you know, addressing the needs of, of people, especially folks that are hanging on to that last knot at the end of the rope is something that I was raised to, to see. My folks volunteered at the church and they brought us to soup kitchens and, you know, it just kind of, it gives you a sense that, look, you're, you're in public service for, you know, a reason. You know, when I was in Swambskut, you know, I mobilized a group of volunteers from Town Hall and we went over and served dinner at my brother's table in Lynn a few times, especially during the holidays. And it was, it was one of the most, you know, life-affirming things that a number of these department heads and staff had done, just because it, they saw some residents that they, you know, knew in town. And you kind of step out of your, your role and you do things, you know, as a, as a team outside of the workplace and you serve and you, you're doing some good work. It, it really does help, I think, live your values in terms of the residents. I, I keep an open door. I've always had an open door. Criticize the times for having an open door, but for me, it's, I want everybody to come in and, and say hello. I've had, you know, town manager coffee hours, I'm, you know, called bingo down at the senior center dozens of times. I've had my police chiefs and fire chiefs do the same thing. I encourage select board members to join me too. You know, just getting out and connecting with people, it sort of, you know, management, management by moving around. If you're not out and about, you, you don't have an opportunity to really hear where those pressure points are. Sure, if I go to the senior center, there's going to be probably 10 people that ask me to fix their sidewalk or, but, you know, that's, that's why we're in these positions, you know, to, to try to be responsive and try to hear what those concerns are.
Okay. Paris, you've got number nine.
I'm happy to ask it if people want me to. I feel like we've covered it.
I think we might as well.
You'd rather ask it? Okay.
Yes, please.
So can you just give us a sense of the financial management experience you can point to that will reassure our residents that our finances remain in good hands?
Yeah, I, you know, I think part of what we've talked about is just, you know, having some policies, but also, you know, my experience is, you know, really rested in, in managing day-to-day. Once a budget's approved, it's not a contract, it's a, it's a plan. And so as we kind of look at the changing landscape of federal funding, state funding, you know, we've got to be ready to act. And, and I've managed through the Great Recession as a town manager. I've managed through pandemics as a town administrator. I've, I've been the person that has had to take a town that had a double A minus, you know, bond rating and take it to a triple A bond rating. I, I know the finances. It's hard. It's hard work. I don't, I don't want to make too light of it, but certainly something that I think I've done fairly successfully in my career.
Thank you.
All right.
Is that triple A with what agency?
Moody's.
How long did that take to go from double to triple?
Seven years. Every year I met with them, I, I actually, I took them on bus tours through a three-mile town, a couple, I just forced them and I...
It didn't take that long.
We, I, but I couldn't believe that they didn't look at our levy capacity. Our levy capacity, Swambskut's levy capacity in 2016, the year before I got there was, I think they were $600,000. They had $600,000 in levy capacity. Eight years later, we had close to $8 million in levy capacity, but Moody's wouldn't recognize it. And for me, it was like, that was a sign of fiscal discipline. We could have certainly taxed to the hilt, but we had a select board and finance committee and school committee that all agreed that we were going to build budgets that were fiscally prudent, not, you know, and it was, it was hard work because, you know, that policy forced me to, you know, take it to, you know, the budget and to every contract. And some of the contracts, whether it was to sell towers, I had to go and ask for more. And I had to kind of look at where, where do we get new revenue? We had to, you know, we immediately, you know, when we built the new school, we started looking at what's the most valuable economic development project that we could bring? And it was a hotel. And we had to figure out how to invite a bunch of hoteliers to town and sell them on a hotel.
So we're going to, I'm going to look at the time here for a second. Let, I'll start with Anthea. Everybody has any follow-up questions? Then we have a few wrap-ups for you, Sean, randomly around, you know, getting started and then questions for us. But I'll just let everybody have a follow-up if they want to. I'll save mine for the end.
I'm tempted to ask how much of town meeting you watched, but that's...
I don't care about the water rates.
No, well, I've watched a few of the select board meetings too, so I know.
Yeah. But, but my...
I can't believe like our garfunkel is the, you know, I'm just kidding.
Right, but we're not, it's very much not our garfunkel.
Yes, that's right.
But my actual question is, you, you, so you may have, you know, you may be aware that we have quite a bit of sort of turnover and folks with a lot of institutional knowledge coming up. And so I was curious your approach to handling that turnover and when you would be in an interim role and, you know, how, how you would approach both the hiring, any hiring that needed to be done, but also just what it would look like to bring in, you know, potentially new folks or, or deal with that largely?
We'd have to be very careful about how we dealt with that. You know, for me, you know, an interim, you know, you know, I'd work with the board very closely on, on trying to figure that out. I think there's some critical positions and certainly I'm a professional and so my, my job is to, you know, hire professional. And so my job is to, you know, hire professional people and, you know, try to help the town retain them. So I've gone through the great resignation. I've come up with some really helpful ideas about how to retain people. And I certainly would work with the board to try to, you know, ensure that, you know, we were a choice employer that, you know. And I think the town's in a pretty good position to attract a number of professionals, so.
I'll go to Mike next.
You know, one of our needs is always strategic maintenance. When we look at maintaining our facilities, we just opened a brand-new elementary school today, which is bigger and shiny, shinier and newer. And we don't necessarily have, you know, our heads wrapped around how we're going to keep it looking that way for a long time. It's always harder for us. People want the new things and they don't want to invest in the maintenance, right? Because it's, part of our job is political. What is your experience or personal philosophy around investing in strategic maintenance of our capital investments?
I mentioned management by walking around, but I'll walk, you know, the roofs. I'll take a look at facial boards. Like, I had a part-time building inspector that I promoted to a full-time building inspector, made him the building commissioner, then made, promoted him to the facilities director. And so I've worked with the select board and frankly, the superintendent because we actually had a shared facilities director who's still doing a marvelous job in Swansky. But, you know, I've walked around buildings with my facilities director and I've pointed to things and I said, "Look, if you don't put paint on dry wood, it's going to rot and pretty soon that's going to need to be replaced. You've got to clear the leaves out of flat rooftop drains. Otherwise, it'll freeze and expand and you'll have a leak in the brand-new gymnasium." So for me, it's making sure you have your team really focused on protecting, you know, your parks and your facilities and really seeing that as, you know, a key piece of our credibility as public agencies. If you have a broken bench and, you know, all those, it's like the broken window philosophy. You want to make sure you just take care of those things. On a bigger picture, you need a 30-year capital plan if you really want to take care of things. You cannot manage your budget. You can't manage your tax levy. You can't manage without seeing two and a half life cycles of windows, parking lots, you know, parks, roofs. You have to see that over a horizon. Ladder trucks cost a million and a half dollars. Like, you just, you have to know when these things are going to hit the levy and see how your financial forecast can tie it all together.
Thank you.
Parrish?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay, Bill? All right. So the last couple of things which you have, I think, in front of you are, what do you see as your steepest learning curve related to this position? And conversely, where would you hit the ground running?
The steepest learning curve is really just getting familiar with my colleagues on the board. Just making sure that, you know, I understand, you know, what your collective goals are over the next six months. And I get a sense of kind of the tone and the tenor that you think will be necessary to implement the game plan. It's a, you know, an ambitious agenda. You've got a lot of wonderful things that you're doing and, you know, you've got to keep the tempo. I am a, you know, high-energy guy, you know, I have three boys, I coach and I'm busy. So, you know, I'm eager to get going. I certainly, I'm versatile. It was my high school superlative, but it's true. There are a lot of things that I can do pretty well. Doesn't mean I do anything really great, but, you know, I, there's a lot that I can step in and help support. You know, I've really enjoyed working with my teams. I've developed interns into town account, town treasurers and, you know, I've turned assistant town accountants into finance directors. So I know how to support staff development and I think I can, you know, really hit the ground running just because, you know, I've got the experience of managing complicated agencies that have had similar challenges and opportunities.
And do you have any questions for us?
You know, I've watched your meetings. I think biggest is, you know, what's your highest, what's your vision for Winchester? What do you hope to accomplish as board members? But not necessary to get into, I think we can, you know, learn about that. I, you know, I think I've got a pretty good handle on some of the issues that you're dealing with and, but-
I think if we didn't mention it, if it wasn't clear from Parrish's question, we do, we did convene a state of the town committee, the select board did. The start of the calendar year really kicked it off after spring town meeting, looking at override, looking at long-term capital needs, looking at long-term operational needs. So I think priority for the board, you know, right now is hiring a permanent town manager, for sure, but also getting through that process to truly understand the timing of that override, the size and needs municipal, school and capital, and really trying to put, you know, build out a five-year plan. Maybe not a 10-year plan just yet, but building out a really solid five-year plan. Parrish chairs that group. It meets about every other week. It has all the school committee, I'm sorry, all the select board, three of the school committee, finance committee, capital planning, planning board, six at-large citizens and, you know, comptroller, treasurer, town manager here. So our priority now, just given what we had as a structural deficit, we knew this sort of was, this timeframe was looming, but also looking at it holistically and not just what plugs the gap now or how do we keep doing what we do, but where are the efficiencies, where can we be creative? So I think that's our, certainly our focus, whether it's everyone's individual priority. I wouldn't speak to why we're all here, but certainly that's where a lot of our energy is as a board, with a lot of updates happening, you know, every other week.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to sit with you tonight and appreciate what you're doing for the town of Winchester, beautiful town. And-
Thank you.
You know, congratulations on your new school. That is a lot of work.
Kids went crazy.
Yes.
It's great.
It was great. Thank you, Sean.
All right. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I was.
Hello, sir.
Hello.
I'm Steve. Nice to meet you.
How are you?
Yeah, we were talking outside. We'll do it for the camera.
So Anthea's our vice chair. I'm the chair. I met you by the water. We're gonna, we have some, we have some questions in front of you. The way we're going to ask you to maybe spend five minutes or so on yourself and why you might want to do this or what you like about being town manager, town administrator. And then we will go around the room. I'll ask a question, Anthea will, and then we'll kind of circulate through. And there's some time, obviously, at the end for you to ask, so that's how we go. So you can start, please.
I'll give you the capsule version as much as I can in terms of my background and history. I've been in municipal government for many years. I retired from the town of Danvers where I was, had downsized a little bit, became the HR director in Danvers. I'd previously been the town administrator in Georgetown. I've done HR work in virtually every job I've been in as a town manager. It's a piece of it whether you like it or not. But I did a lot of great stuff with it. When I retired, I've done a couple. Since I retired, I've done probably four different. I've done two manager roles and two HR roles. The first year I retired, they were short-staffed in Lexington, so I worked with Carl there for, Carl was the town manager at the time, and worked with him for almost six, seven months there while they were filling the HR position there. I did a position down in Coventry, Rhode Island, filling in Coventry, which was a challenge because of the commute, but it eventually worked out. And then I did about a six-month interim in the town of Winchonan, which was pretty interesting because it's a challenging town. It was in '21 toward the second half of the COVID crisis. So we did quite a bit of work there on that. And then I did a fill-in for the town of Belmont a couple of years ago in the HR side. So I've been around a little bit. And since I retired, I also do, my other life has been, I'm also a photographer and writer. So I'm a member, I do photographic art. I'm a member of the Rockport Art Association and the Copley Society in Boston. So that's my other side. I write for a couple of magazines, mostly railroad. I'm a big railroad buff, so I do a lot of railroad writing. Just finished one on the Narrow Gage in Maine up near West Gassit. Why do we do this kind of work? There's a bunch of us that are in this age bracket, seniors, if you will, helping communities out. It's been, I've noticed that the pool is tight for candidates. And my friend Jeff Nutting, who was a manager down in Franklin, I just got a note from him the other day and he said he just finished his 15th interim assignment in the last several years. And I'm not anywhere near close to it and doubt that I would ever get to 15. So that's kind of the capsule. And if I could give you, if I could, just maybe a sort of an overview of how I'd approached this and then I can get to your questions. Would that work? Probably the key role for an interim is to offer some stability and to keep things running so that you as a board can focus on the bigger issue of finding the right person to fill the long-term manager role. That's a big one. So my approach is that, to kind of keep things rolling smoothly. My initial approach walking into a position like this is an immediate meeting with the department heads. I want to know what issues are priorities and they're in, on their desk. What are the things that are going to bite us? What are the flashpoints that are out there that I need to know about? And I'm thinking about the financial issues. I've read through your budget, for example, the current budget. What are the legal issues that I need to know about that are pending out there, including workers' comp? Anything that's coming up through council? What are the major projects? For example, where are we on the station project downtown, for example, just as an example? It's been, I've watched it for the last couple of years as I've been around town. It's been quite a, quite an upheaval. Just, and I'll just leave it at that. The other thing I take a look at is risk assessment. How we do it ties into workers' comp, but what are the risks out there? How are we managing risk assessment? And also that relates to our IT function as the risk factor in terms of towns are getting scammed. And the town of Franklin, for example, got bilked out of several hundred thousand dollars in a scam thing. So what's our internal controls and how are we facing that? And then the next piece is terms of regular updates and communication with the select board. How I do an outreach, probably the first few days I'm on site, I'll make phone calls to other departments in the community that are key players in this, including department heads. Could be school department, could be council on aging. And just being visible. My philosophy is being able to walk into somebody's office and not have them cringe because the manager's there. If they can treat me like I was here, it's no big deal. That's a great goal. Then I can really get a feel for what's going on. Another big piece is visibility. The old management style of, it used to be called MBWA, management by walking around. And I know I'm dating myself bringing it up. No matter what you want to call it, it's about visibility. It's about caring the people for the people that are part of your staff, being around and being available for them, particularly for, in a time of a crisis, being available and responsive. So that's kind of an overview. I've also taught nights for 27 years, 37 years. Most recently at BU in municipal finance and management, so I've been busy.
Sounds like it. So when we wrap back around about how you're going to hit the ground running, you can probably rehash some of that, but that's going to be one of our wrap-up questions, but that's okay. Maybe you'll embellish that with something you've learned in the course of these conversations. So I'll start the first one, which I think you already alluded to, but our first was, you know, in that interim role, how would you get to know our department heads and other key staff? How do you develop and sustain productive relationships when you're in an acting role?
Well, the first piece of that is in terms of, and I probably should have mentioned, but going back to the transition piece. In instances, for example, in Winchonan, the exiting town manager was going to another position in another community. We usually work on a briefing booklet as, when I fulfill my role, the incoming manager has a detailed briefing booklet on issues that are expanded upon that the exiting town manager had left for me and that we talked about. So that there's a, you immediately walk in and you've got your operating manual of what the key issues are for the next several weeks or several months. For example, you've got town meeting coming up. What's the prep line for that, for example? That's a kind of a key piece. You don't want to miss a deadline and have things go down the tube on you, which has happened in other towns. So I tend to be detail-oriented. I often work backwards from the deadline to make sure I've got the dates lined up, that they all fall in place. The thing with key staff is I try to, in first, in the first week or two, to make a physical visit to most every location so that they can see who I am and they get some sort of sense of what this person is all about. As Yogi Berra says, it's harder to dislike you if, you know, if they see you. So that's kind of the, there's another piece to that too in terms of the theory of managing. It's, you know, just in how you do things, just the visibility piece.
Okay. Familiarity also breeds contempt would be another person's view of things, but that's all right. We'll take your version, Steve. I like it. Anthea's got the next one.
So I see a little bit in your resume and your experience, but can you tell us about your experience with being the point person and negotiating contracts and collective bargaining in your permanent or in your acting roles? And then, if you can, about how many contracts have you done?
When I was in Danvers, in every administrative role I've been in, in Danvers, I was the direct point of contact for the contracts. We didn't usually have counsel at the table except for police and fire. I was the point of contact. The department head would sit in with me. The town manager would not sit in normally on the contract negotiations. And as I recall, I think we had like 11 collective bargaining units, ranging from support staff in Town Hall to middle managers. We had a middle management group. We've had the electric, we had electric utility, public works. So there was about 11 units and they were all on a rotating basis. Police and fire were part of that. Trying to think what else. We did not do the school side. The school side did their own. In different places, for example, in Georgetown. In Danvers, the town manager was a signatory on the contracts. In Georgetown, for example, it was the select board. So the select board got more involved in the strategy sessions and the updates and would be present as part of the negotiating team. In those roles, I'd be the point person for support and would develop, and hopefully we'd get to the finish line in good form, so.
And in our town, select board is the signatory, but traditionally contracts have had a lot of town management leadership. Every town's a little different, but we are the signatories of those agreements. Okay, Mike?
What is the highest-profile public issue which you've been involved in as an acting interim town manager or administrator? And what was the outcome? And would you do anything differently?
When I took, when I, in, Winchonan would be a good example. When I arrived there in the early spring, I think it was, they were pretty much ready for town meeting. But lo and behold, the estimates for revenue on the revenue side of the budget were pushed back by the state because they had estimated, let's say, $500,000 in revenue from a cannabis opening, retail cannabis. retail cannabis. It wasn't even close to a permit at that point, but we were estimating the revenues. And the state said, no, that's not going to work. So immediately I've got a $500,000 hole that I'm trying to figure. Combined with that, there was a question of budgeting within the fire department, which was a problem in terms of how the payroll was computed. And ended up bringing in some outside analysis to help us sort through to figure out where the bottom line was. Those are two big ones that worked, worked pretty well. We also, another interesting piece in Winchandon, Winchandon had the, in the first time in my career, I found a foundation which was actually giving money to the community of the tune of 500,000 or a million a year. Give us your wish list. So it was, it was a very interesting process of getting the input from the select board and other departments as to what we would do. It's, it's called the Robinson Broadhurst Foundation. And, and it goes back to the old industrial days of the folks who were involved with banking in that area and had ties to the community and also to the town of Stamford, New York, which is a similar economic status. But amazing how that impacted in terms of trying to preserve some of the older buildings. But, but that case in Winchandon was a big one in terms of how we handle that and, and did it pretty well.
Any follow-up, Mike?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Bill?
Can you describe how you see the working relationship between the acting town manager? And that's really the important key word here, the acting town manager. And what that relationship should be with the select board in order to be most effective?
The first thing that pops into my head is that you need good information. So that's the, probably the first thing on my list that, that I tend to be detail-oriented. So whatever passes through my desk to your board has got to be accurate and has to have good information to it. I'm not hesitant to offer opinions or thoughts on, on different, different pieces of it, but ultimately framing it so that you can make informed decisions. However, you may see things from a different perspective. That's the way it works. But to get you the best information I can get as it flows in from the departments and as I see it around us, also alerting you to stuff that I might see coming, say, from the state or the federal government. I mean, we're in such a state of uncertainty with some of the federal funding issues. That is a red flag on my screen that says, I got to watch closely to see what's going to happen there. Because as you know, we're all creatures of the state. We don't have the independence to do stuff on our own. And it's the state and feds that tell us what to do. We sometimes forget that piece.
Yeah.
We'd like to.
I think, I think those things are definitely true for any town manager. Do you think the relationship for the interim town manager is any different than it might be for the full-time town manager?
No. It, it, as I said at the top, my job would be to keep it flowing smoothly. And that's continuation of, of your current town manager's process. Things that she has had as, that are in process, making sure that those continue in a way that it feels seamless. It's not that it's, the interim town manager shouldn't necessarily be a change agent in that sense, but also shouldn't be afraid to deal with the tough issues as they come up. But that's important. I don't, I don't see the interim, I wouldn't be doing organizational changes. That's not, that's not the role unless there's a crisis and you've got to respond to it. Does that help?
It does. Thank you.
All right, Parrish?
It's a good segue to the question, number five on the list there. The town has a number of, the town has a, a number of longer-term strategic initiatives in progress. So we have fiscal issues that we're trying to work through. As you, as you mentioned, you read the budget, so be interested in your thoughts there. And, and one part of that is potentially an override in, in 2026. We have large capital projects in flight. We have the implementation of, of the CPA which passed last year. And so there's a lot of, of, you know, long-term baked initiatives that, you know, various members of town and select board have worked on. And so the question, you know, for you is, as an interim town manager, how do you enable and support these initiatives to go forward? But at the same time, you know, ensuring that a lot of the progress that our residents expect to see just continues?
A good piece of that, I'm, I'm thinking through, there's a lot of players that go into this. And your budget document that I read talks about that line that's been trending out that may need another override coming up. So with that in mind, you've also, I think I know, so I know that you have a state-of-the-town sort of effort coming up. We did that in, in Georgetown that was very, very helpful in terms of bringing folks to the table to have that kind of discussion where we're all looking for something for our respective areas and how do you make it all work? And understanding from the finance side the constraints, which is nothing new. I mean, we've been struggling with constraints since prepped two and a half, 40 years ago, believe it or not. But how to make it work and somehow it's been working. But what I saw in your budget analysis is the reliance upon the free cash flow is, is creeping downward in terms of what's ahead. The strategic decisions about what gets funded and what doesn't is a decision that, that is either through this group or other groups or through the town meeting. It's not a decision that starts here, but again, it goes to that information, giving you enough information and priorities, helping you set priorities and categorize what's important. Everybody's project is the most important. But I mean, but having that discussion with everybody at the table is going to help people realize, oh, wait a minute. I, I can see the other perspective, whether it's from school or the library or some other department that is pushing hard for something they need. And then you're trying to balance that all out with some sort of, you can use a rating system to kind of help it a bit. And I think, and on the finance side saying, okay, here's what's possible. Are there other avenues of revenue? And we've been doing this for a long time in terms of trying to find out where the other sources are. So it's a combination of all those things to help make it, to make it work. It's not an easy process. And I start with an open mind in terms of, I don't have a preference for any one department or any one thing. It's about what comes to the table and what you folks as the, as the leaders of the community start to set your priorities on. We work with what you folks see as priorities. We'll give you the tools to make it work.
Follow-up? Yeah, of course.
Thank you for, for that answer. And you know, both the development of the 2027 FY27 operating budget, which would pass, as you said, in, in, in May of 2026, but the process starts much earlier. And, you know, wherever I would say to the town, what's interesting is the interim town manager is likely to be here for a lot of that, but not through the end of it. Because that would be March and then April, May of, of next year. And we're, we're hoping to have a, a full-time town manager by that point. So a lot of it would be, you know, assisting with all this work through the end of the year, helping with the next year's operating budget, but then having to hand it off to the, to the next person. So just interested in how you think that, that through. You know, maybe take the, the budget one, which is probably a little bit, bit easier. If, if we're developing it, but then in, in January, you're handing it off to someone, how, how would you leave the process in a good place that a new town manager wouldn't be? You know, it, it, it wouldn't just swamp them sort of on day one?
There would be a status report of what we've accomplished, what's settled, what isn't. Maybe collective bargaining agreements have been settled, so we know that number. Maybe we've locked in some state aid numbers. Maybe there's been decisions made on what the priorities are. By the time, when, when is your annual meeting? Is it in May?
November and May.
November and May.
But the budget is May.
So your budget is probably by, say, March or February is starting to come?
So town manager's budget's due to finance committee on February 15th?
Yeah, okay. So that's similar to what I've been through. So long before then, you've already setting priorities?
Absolutely.
So you've got, by the time the town manager's budget gets to you, there's already, I'm guessing, as it typically is, there's already been revisions, thoughts, discussions with departments, cajoling, consolidation, squeezing what you can so that the budget is tight as it gets to you. It should be a pretty easy handoff in terms of, here's, here's what we've done. Here are the pieces that remain to be done. Here's the pros and cons of how it's going to work. Here's some issues of why it hasn't been this piece or that piece, but it's a, it's a basic handoff. It's pretty easy. Plus, you've got the finance staff here that are part of that process the whole way.
Yeah, good point. Thank you.
How would you work to maintain a working relationship between the town and the Winchester Public Schools?
I've always had a close relationship with the schools. The schools have a whole different set of, of pressures and context upon them. I try to respect that in the sense of it's usually difficult to try and, it's easier for the municipal side, not easier, but it's, it's, it's a lot more direct in terms of being able to sort of manage the cash flow on the general government side. Schools are facing a lot more pressures and risks, particularly on the special ed side. A lot more expenses that are unpredictable. So you've got to kind of figure that out. So I've always had a close relationship with the school side, particularly in, in terms of the HR and insurance as we, we would work closer with them. The insurance piece alone, recruitment side and that sort of thing. It's, it's about communication. Both sides, we pick up the phone and have a chat and, and talk it through. The other, the other piece that I talk about in, in the, in my initial week or two is to talk with the union reps on all sides so that they know who I am. Just to introduce myself. And, and a lot of labor relations is preventative efforts. You've got a problem, come and talk to me before you throw a piece of paper at me. And we can have a conversation. And sometimes we need to adjust how we did something. And that's part of, that's part of collective bargaining, it's part of getting along together. It's the nature of the business. Does that help?
Thanks.
Mike?
Winchester residents are more familiar with our situation and political process than you will be. At the same time, an outsider brings fresh eyes to a given place or institution and may perceive things that we do not. What do you see as our greatest strengths and our greatest challenges here in Winchester?
You certainly have an engaged community. I've seen that in several other communities. I remember doing a, a public work study years ago in the town of Concord. And everybody in the town had a better idea than I did in terms of how they wanted to see things done. And I respect that. And, and in that sense, the community involvement is incredibly valuable. I don't come in with a preconceived notion of strengths and weaknesses of this group. And frankly, at this point, I don't have an assessment of, of what's going on here. I have a kind of an overview, but I'm open to listening and to understand. I'm a pretty quick learner in that sense of grasping what's real and what's not. And working and respecting the people who are here. Respecting the uniqueness of the community is part of that delicate balance that any incoming manager has got to understand. One shoe size does, one size doesn't fit all in every community in terms of how I think something should be run. A lot of it depends, back in my consulting days, we would say that not every cookie cutter thought fits in every town. Doesn't work. So you have to understand the local, the local culture, if you will, the local people who make it so special, particularly in this community. I mean, it's, this is a pretty unique community in the sense of how it's situated physically. It's a, it's a, it's not a pass-through community in the sense of, of highways or traffic. It's, it's got a lot more insular kind of quality to the, to the downtown area, I think, which is unique in, in many ways. It's very attractive.
All right, Bill?
I think you've already mentioned that you've observed our local population and its investment in its local government. So with that, our citizens here do expect their officials, both elected and staff, to be available and accessible. So how would you interact with our citizens? And what concrete actions would you take or have you taken in previous jobs to improve both direct services and communications with the general public of the town?
Part of it's visibility. Let me try it in two, two parts. For, for emergency, in terms of availability, for emergencies issues, it's 24/7. I get a call from police or fire or senior services. I've always said to the department heads, if there's something you think you need to get a hold of me for, call. I'd rather say, it's okay, don't worry about it, but don't hesitate to call. Don't think twice about it. The other part is visibility. I would, and I've mentioned, for example, I, I would, the senior centers are a great place to visit to understand the sense of the community and what's going on with the senior centers. The library, I'm a big library guy. I have multiple library cards at different libraries. But it's, it's about meeting with the community groups, whether it's a, whether it's the Rotary or whatever other groups might be. It's that visibility piece, responding to citizen complaints. If the door's open and there's nobody in my office, come on in. That's why we're here. I mean, we're here, you've got to understand I'm a product of the 60s. So it's a, we're here to do our best to help the community. And that's kind of why I'm even here as an interim candidate. So I don't know if that helps, but in terms of, there has to be a response. There should be a response and there would be a response from me in whatever form it needs to be. A big piece of it is when people come in, for example, upset, it's because they don't understand something. And, and 90% of the time, if you can sit with them and help them understand what it is, it's not a mystery. Do you have a problem with the budget? Let me show you how it works. And most of the time, they will thank you. If you're, if you're reasonable with them and it's just part of being who we are is public people. So there's no place for a big ego here. We run copy machines, we'll do everything, you know? It's just, that's the way it works.
Careful what you volunteer for.
I understand.
Parrish, you've got number nine.
Appreciate you've answered some of this already, but just to, to put it squarely to you. What financial management experience can you point to that will reassure residents that our finances remain in good hands? I might just add a bit to that. We, we've talked about one of the main things in front of us is the settling of the collective bargaining agreement. So maybe you could mention some of that in the, in your comments as well.
Yep. So the first thing that comes to mind is your current operating budget. Monitor it through monthly statements. You look for variances. You, you know that some of the items are going to hit your budget early on. You want to see how your tax revenues are going. Are the assessors involved in the, in any revale that might be going out? Is there anything that's going to trip out our income flow that's going to affect the income side? The expense side, trying to space out some of your expenses, particularly on capital, because usually at the first part of the fiscal year, you don't necessarily have the big cash flow that you can fund a million-dollar capital project with. You'd like to hold off and space them out if you can, unless it's being bonded. But you try to, so that's for the operating budget. And as I said, you also look at the, what are the warning signs? And what's the prognosis for the next three to five years on some of my major income sources? Whether it's property tax or excise tax or state or federal aid? Is it chapter 90 street monies that are coming in for public works? Some of those are federal funds, so what's going to happen if they get cut up in Washington? What's the impact long-term? We went through this back at the end of revenue sharing back in the 80s when the Ronald Reagan era came in. When revenue sharing disappeared, communities got destroyed with, because they were using this revenue sharing money to fund positions in departments, particularly police and fire. And you saw a lot of layoffs in that era. So those are the kinds of things you've got to watch for. You want to minimize the risk of a disaster. And the manager and the interim manager needs to be on top. There's nothing that'll take it down worse and quicker than a bad financial. What are your internal controls? Is there a possibility of internal theft? It happens, but how do you know that your internal controls are tight enough? And your annual audit should have an extensive piece on your internal control piece, a management letter. It's part of the management letter. So first thing I look for is the management letter. How are our internal controls? And, and that's absolutely critical.
Management letter from the auditor?
Yes, as part of their audit. It's one thing, audits are, audits are pretty easy to balance, but unless they dig below the to balance, but unless they dig below the surface in terms of how do we handle our internal controls, they have limited value, in my view. The manager, and it took me a while to convince that. I, one of, one of the members of the select board in Georgetown, I'm sorry, in, in Wenham was a CPA. And he would be really upset if the management audit came down and didn't have an adequate management letter in it. And it took me a while to figure out that it wasn't about, it wasn't about criticism, it was about constructive thoughts on how to maintain that internal control piece. So like I said, I'm, I'm a convert. That's the first thing I look for in the management letter, in the, in the audit, is what are the internal controls? Critical in, in terms of how that goes. That's the biggest piece that you need to be able to reassure the people that we're managing the current budget, that we're not recommending something for the future that isn't a basis in fact. Like in Winchandon, recommending the, the use of 500,000 from cannabis stuff where it was kind of like a wish list. We ended up having to meet and kind of go through and pull that 500,000 out of free cash, which we couldn't afford. So you try to avoid that kind of crisis. I tend to be pretty conservative on revenue estimates. Sometimes the finance committees would kick it back a little bit and say, isn't that a little tight? I'd rather have it a little tight than overestimating. So.
Okay.
Does that help? Good.
All right. So before we go, anybody, no, we'll just do follow-up questions. So I'll start with Anthea.
So, one of the things that's facing us at this point in Winchester is some departmental turnover of folks who have pretty extensive institutional knowledge. So what would be your approach to handling turnover as in our interim role, especially in some of those larger, critical, sort of larger roles within the town?
There's a couple pieces to that. First of all, you'd need to know the specifics of what the issues are. I mean, it could be very different for each potential person. So I'd want to know more about that. The other piece of that is, how are you developing or not the middle management group to take over, to be there in the event of a change? Succession planning is like the buzzword. But in, in Lexington, they had, Carl had a wonderful little, had a wonderful plan where the middle managers would kind of meet as a group, as their own professional group. So you had this sense of ownership and pride with the middle management group in terms of how they work. And it was a, it was a very interesting way to try and strengthen the middle part of the organization. So if you do have changeover, if one of us should take ill, or someone, something happens, that somebody else can step up, at least on a temporary basis, and fill that role. Are there issues with competitive pay? Are there issues with, I'm just fed up with public service. I'm tired. That happens. I've burned out. Are there ways that we can make it work that maybe changes your role? We've had situations where people get promoted up and said, you know, this isn't, this is more than I thought it would be. This isn't working. But yet they had value in the organization in another role, and we've done that to kind of work it. Are we making the best of our people? We had a, a great case in Davis with the young mom coming back for working hours. And we would bring folks in like that with, trying to structure their hours. And one of them went on and became the town clerk, which was wonderful. But it's that flexibility in how you approach and how you treat the staff that makes a big difference. So it's two parts. It's, it's the individual issues that you need to address, and then have you strengthen the middle part so that if there is a gap, you might be able to fill it without running in panic to get someone from the outside. Because it's a tight, it's a tight market. It's, it's, it's harder to get folks in to these roles, given the challenges of the day.
We've heard that more than once.
Yeah.
Indeed. All right, Mike?
I've got, I think I don't think so right now, unless you'd like me to.
Capital maintenance?
Okay. As you, we may have mentioned, we just opened a new elementary school today, which we're very excited about. And we've been somewhat successful of opening new schools, new buildings, and getting some new facilities and amenities in town. But what is harder for us is the strategic maintenance of our capital investments. What is your kind of personal philosophy on that? It's, it can be hard for us as kind of political beings to put money towards things that people don't see. But from your seat, I imagine you understand the importance of it.
I, I can tell you, a model program that, and I should add, I worked for the town of Davis three times in my career. I was assistant town manager back in 1980 and got laid off as part of Prop 2 and 1/2. So my history, a lot of my history comes with what I saw in Davis. And we used the model of maintenance of all municipal buildings, including schools, fell under public works. So you had one central place. Because the dilemma that schools face is, what's the first thing that gets cut? If it's all on the school side, it's a maintenance piece if it means a position in, in the classroom. In some ways, it takes, we, we handle all the maintenance, all the cleaning, fuel deliveries. In those days, it was a lot of oil deliveries. It's different now. But that was a model that I think made a huge difference in terms of standard of care for all the buildings, because they're all on the same playing field. And it allowed the school department to focus on the educational side and complain to us when something wasn't fixed right, which worked well. And we encouraged them to be vocal about it. And to hold our, our cleaning staff, we did a lot of contractual cleaning back in those days, still do. But I think that was a big piece in terms of maintaining the, the physical structures around the community. And you'll see that in Davis now. It's, it's well done.
Thank you.
That's probably the biggest thing I can think of in terms of how to, how to maintain it. You centralize it under one department.
Yep.
And that way there, you know it's in one spot, and hopefully nothing gets neglected.
And you hold them accountable.
Follow-up question there?
Yeah, sure.
So you mentioned that, that some of it was done contractually, some of it was done in-house. And then what was the relationship in that case between the school department and DPW director or town manager to whenever they, you know, had a complaint or had, had some area they wanted to be better cleaned or better maintained?
Oh, it, so if there was, if there was a contractual cleaner, let's say in the high school, at night, there's a town employee with them. So, and the town employee is responsible for maintaining the level of performance that is necessary. And you can bet, the school principal is going to let us know if it's not. And, and our chief maintenance person in that building would have interactions with either the principal or the vice principal in terms of how things are going. If they run into a problem, if there's a water break or something, let's say a plumbing issue, they're there in the building. So there's full-time staff, but not the whole staff as town employee. So there's an accountability level.
Did you have another follow-up?
I did not.
Okay, Bill?
Nope.
Okay. Anthea? No, back around?
I will ask another follow-up.
Go ahead.
You mentioned this a little bit, but off the top, you kind of talked about risk and, about risk.
Mm-hmm.
And so I wondered if you could just give us a little bit more of how you might assess risk, both from a, you've talked a bit more about financial, but also from a non-financial standpoint.
There is a risk assessment tool that you can use. And I'd, I'd be hard-pressed. It's probably 12 items on it that you look at in terms of, and it ranges from subtle things like signage, policy statements, to actual in-practice stuff. For example, public works is a big one in terms of risk assessment. Are they doing confined space entry? Are they doing proper roadway placements and safety training? I also have served as a, as a safety manager in, in the organization. So we used to call it the yellow light, red light syndrome. If an employee is walking up to something, does the caution flag go up and saying, this appears dangerous, maybe I shouldn't walk into it? So there's that kind of physical stuff that we would do. But you can't short-change the amount of training that you need to do, particularly confined space. We used to do a lot with power tools or defensive driving through Maya. Would have the defensive driving efforts. The police and fire would do their whole, their own sets of training, which is critical for all the time. So training piece with, policy piece is another one. As I said, there's probably like 12 steps, and I probably have a copy of it at home somewhere. But you look at your insurance folders, how, what's our liability issues? Are we well-protected? Workers' comp, how do you handle workers' comp? We contracted out most of our workers' comp management and saved probably a couple hundred thousand bucks in the process, which was pretty significant in terms of how that managed, managed the care of those who are out on injury leave. And is there something about that particular injury that needs correcting in the workplace? Is, if it's a recurring injury, for example, how do we do that? So it's not only physical stuff, but like I say, the policy side, particularly, so that, like I said, there's about 12 things that you can go through. But it's a, they're often in many communities, a risk manager. You know, we, I did a lot of work with, with workers' comp with Maya. I was on the Maya board for a while on the, on the Health Trust. So I got to see a lot of it from that perspective.
I do have one follow-up.
Oh yeah, go ahead.
In either of the interim roles that you've had, as town manager or in any of the interim HR roles you've had, have you participated or, or led, you know, the, the warrant review for, for the town manager articles at a town meeting?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and virtually all of them, except for the interim HR role.
Okay. But in, in Winchandon, you actually went through a town meeting?
Oh yeah, absolutely. In Coventry, Rhode Island, they call it a financial meeting with 800 people in an auditorium, and you're on a stage in front. That was probably the most rigorous. But preparing that and the, and the budget failed, and we had to go to the state legislature to get a 1/12 budget to go forward. That was an experience. I have a picture of it somewhere of us in this empty hall before they all arrived. That was tough. But yeah, the warrant process, working with town council to make sure the wording's proper, getting the draft together, working with prior articles that have been, you kind of have templates for some of them that are, that are recurring, particularly like revenue revolving funds. But there's some new stuff. Citizens petitions, making sure that they're documented properly if they come in, making sure that the deadlines are met and, and the timeline is met. Attention to detail. So yeah, from, from setting the timeline from town meeting back to when you start, to present, presentation of the warrant articles at town meeting. For example, in Georgetown and Wenham, the Board of Selectmen and I would both present articles. They would present the actual physical articles at home meeting, but I'm sitting with them on the stage as we do that.
Thank you.
We're very much aware of our fall town meeting deadlines, for sure. Okay, so the last couple things we wanted to, to just focus on. What, what do you see is your steepest learning curve related to the position in Winchester? And where do you expect to hit the ground running?
What was the last part?
Where do you expect to hit the ground running? So you got the learning curve, that you're going uphill, and then where do you think you can just?
Oh, first week. First few days. As I said, I, it, it doesn't take long. It's a, if there's a, if there's a, I would say within, by the end of the first week, you're pretty much up to speed. You know where you are. You know where the, you know where the bumps are. You know where the good things are. And you, you're already, people will start to find you. The staff will find you. You will know pretty quickly, particularly if there's a handoff document that says, these are the things to think about. I'm, I'm not sure what your timeline is. There's not, I don't usually think there's a need for any overlap. But, I mean, in Winchandon, the town manager and I met for a few hours one morning, and, and we were kind of tripping over each other. So, I mean, you, you get started pretty quick. I mean, there's, there's really no downtime, because you just jump right in. You kind of know the, the names and faces and issues change, but the structure doesn't. It's the same financial structure that you'll find every town. So you, it's, it's a pretty quick process.
Okay. Do you have any reservations about serving as our acting town manager? And then do you have any questions for us?
No, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, it's, like I said, it's about keeping the house in order until you get a new person here and making sure that everything's in good shape when that new person comes in. It's, it's really that simple.
Do you have any questions for us?
I don't know. What's your sense of timetable?
So the town manager leaves right after Labor Day. And as Anthea mentioned in her question, the assistant town manager retires at the end of September as well. So two departures in the month of September. So we are hoping to move in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
To have, you know, obviously, we have some deliberations to ourselves, some references and things and contracts need to be negotiated, but we hope to move quickly. We, we may, we may yet have a gap. Beth may be gone on September 30. We don't have an acting town manager until September 9th, but we want to be in, we want to be staffed up pretty quickly.
How soon would you be able to start?
Pretty, pretty, within a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not an issue. I'm, I'm pretty, I've got a few appointments scheduled and a couple of projects I'm working on, but pretty much immediate.
Okay.
All right. Any questions for us? No?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks for your time. Nice to meet you all.
Yeah, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
All right.
My brother's also a train guy. So he runs a small river.
Ah, I love it.
You can introduce the basics.
I, you know.
They call them homers, you know that?
Yeah, that's, everyone knows it.
I don't bring that up.
So you should tell me what's on my website, under my, you know, see the Rick Train stuff. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
I like my brother, so I don't say that. I said, I like my brother, so I don't.
I used to work for a transit authority. It's the, it's the term that if you, if you got too excited about trains, they would call you that.
I mean, the, the one member of the public was leaving, that's why.
Yes.
Well, the doors are open, they could walk in in theory.
Do you want to take public comment?
Yeah, would you want to give public comment, Lance? You're welcome to. Would you like to give public comment? We are officially called to order. Fair enough.
We can move along here.
I've done this before. Good luck.
Thanks. Thanks, Lance.
Winkham's still here, so we'll just note that, too. As far as deliberation, we've recorded, which is fine.
Should we just say, do you want to?
I, I think, I think about this and using a house hunters methodology, is there any house we want to just cross off the list?
Say it in the positive, if that's okay?
Yes.
I would, I would say that Mr.
Or people who are leading stronger?
LaLoucher, I'll just call them by their first names, Bob, Bob. And I thought Steve, Stephen were very strong candidates.
I would second that.
So, you know, whether we make formal motions tonight to sort of proceed with reference checks and next steps, one thing I, I think I'd like to see a motion for us to do is to, and somebody else can make it, but encourage Beth to develop like a handoff briefing type thing. So I think, that's why I asked Patty to be here tonight, that there might be a motion to, you know, direct the HR director to do some things, but I think there might be a motion to potentially have Beth pull together some things, too. So I wanted to have Patty on the road to just capture what those votes might be. So we're just thinking of the outcome of tonight. Let's see where we are with actual decisions. So, okay, so we have some, some agreement that Sean, so Steve and Bob are, are stronger candidates. Do we have a strong preference one way or the other? We, we certainly would need to check readiness, you know, readiness to start. I believe they both are. But there could be some things that would make one of them less available or just, you know, less the right choice for us. So I'm happy to proceed down a parallel path, but unless we think, we think we want to just go all in on one person.
Yeah, you know, I would just say, and I, I kind of concur with, my colleagues have already said, I think for what we need in this short period of time, I think Steve seems like he is the most capable and, and kind of ready to, to jump in. And so, and, you know, understands the position. I think, you know, I, I think Bob has more of the longer-term depth that we would need in a town manager role, especially on the financial side. But I think that the, the exercise here really is going to be kind of run and gone. And I, and I liked his focus on really preparing us for the transition to the permanent town manager. So, but I, I think that we would, we would do well with either of them in the position. But I, I think just, just by a hair, Steve seems to be the one to stand out to me.
I, I had the same, almost, almost exactly the same analysis. There, there is in the private sector, a...
Um, I think candidly, he would be, he's almost somebody who's coming out of retirement to help, help the town, and we would be very grateful to him if, um, if, if that was where we needed to go. I would be very grateful to him for stepping in and helping us out because I, I think he's otherwise happily retired. But given Stephen does this as sort of an interim, he, he almost has a practice built around interim roles, um, it is just more plug and play for what we're looking for.
Since I haven't yet said anything. Oh, no, I, I agree with both of you. I think, I think both would, um, be strong, are strong candidates. I think both would do well in the role. I, I do think the, the specific, um, interim roles that Steve has had and sort of a knowledge of how to go in and out of, of a relationship with the town, um, will be valuable if, if we go in that direction.
Yeah, I didn't think about the, um, benefits of having somebody who had served specifically in an interim position, uh, multiple times in their, in their, on their resume. I mean, looking at, looking at Bob as he came in, you know, what I was seeing was somebody who had dealt not only with a lot of the issues that we're facing right now, but had dealt with them in one of our neighboring communities. And so I took it to mean that there'd be a lot that he could directly apply between Redding and Winchester. You know, similar sized towns, similar geographical location, similar, uh, financial, um, challenges as what we're facing here. Uh, you know, his, I think he pointed out how they had an override that, um, first failed and passed, and, and that was a, a very, I think, intriguing bit of his story that I think would serve us well. But on the other hand, uh, yeah, somebody who knows what, that they have to come in and just focus on the short term and get things done and keep them moving is, is also a huge benefit. And while, you know, I don't think Stephen, his, his town manager experience, his recent town manager experience is all interim, is more in-depth, is a little bit into his past, but not terribly so. It seems like he's dealt with municipal government from a couple of different positions, a couple of different angles, like he would know the structure, um, pretty quickly. You know, he, he did focus on that. It is interesting, though, that as we're focusing on his interim, uh, experience, how he also did explicitly state that the difference between an interim town manager and a full-time town manager is nothing. They, they deal with us all the same way. He's like, it's all about me making sure that you're informed. And that's something that both of them really focused on, I think. Um, they, they both highlighted the need to make sure the board is getting, you know, good information, constant information, um, being brought into discussions from early on, including with things like contract negotiations or discussions with other boards in other towns. They both, I mean, I'm just making a case for both of them right now. I'm sorry, so.
I feel like I'm about to do the same thing, too.
Yeah, so I guess what I, what I would like to see is, um, some sort of parallel track if possible. I mean, one thing that was also interesting about Bob was he wasn't even necessarily sold on taking the position until he talked to our department heads.
Well, he would need to be sold, I think. That, what I took is he wouldn't, he would need to talk to our department heads to see if he's, if he's sold, so, um, which I think is, is, that's reasonable, too. I mean, I think about when I take consulting projects, I interview them as much as they interview me, and if I don't see a path to success for myself, I turn it down. So I think that's, that's some good due diligence on him as the candidate's part.
Yeah.
Certainly make that happen. So I can certainly go with the group and say, we think maybe Steve's got the, he, he's the lead course in the race. We still want to sort of pressure test Bob's continued interest if he talks to department heads. One thing I liked, well, two, one thing I liked about this process is we learned a lot. Like we heard some things, we heard some interesting habits, some good habits, some things we maybe don't do or didn't think of. One thing I thought where Bob could be a strength was that capital borrowing financial piece, looking at where we are in the override. He was conquered, he was debt service, he was budget, he was, you know, I thought that for where we are and going into a budget season and potentially an override, I thought was a real strength and, and a real kind of recent relevant strength. So that's, that's the only thing that has to be leaning that way, is that, that's strong, you know, I'm the, I'm the debt guy, I'm the capital person, I'm the budget thing. Not that Steve isn't. I think he's all those things. But I think Bob sees that as, as a strong area of strength, and I'm just thinking of our state of the town meeting from last week, like, so. We're, we're, I think we're, we have two good choices. We probably need to move a little faster on, on either formally assessing, you know, Steve's readiness and, and availability, and also what would Bob's availability be and readiness to?
Yeah.
I don't think we asked him that exactly.
We didn't.
Yeah.
So maybe, I mean, it, does it make sense to have the chair have a fo, a short follow-up conversation with each and just sense, um, sense timing, make sure that all of this is.
Realistic.
Realistic, right, that, that we're not, yeah. I mean, I assume it is, they came in, they're here, they're meeting with us, but.
So what do we want, because we all find out the dates and then we'll have to call another select board meeting to take the next step. So what do we?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd be, I mean, I'd be ready to take a motion to, to, you know, um, recommend appointing somebody pending, you know, uh, review from HR.
Which would be references.
Yeah, yeah, references. So, I mean, do, do we think we're there? I don't think we need another meeting.
I'm.
I don't need another meeting.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm at a point where I would do a contingent motion where we would do, we would have one candidate pending a bit time, the, the date availability and HR, and if those don't work out, then we'd go to the next one.
Okay, well, I'll move that. We, um, appoint, um, Stephen Delaney to the interim town manager position pending, um, the chair's outreach on scheduling and HR's check on references.
Second.
Additional debate?
Um, in terms of reference checks, which is HR's check on references, but do, is there anything that, you know, we want to have a follow-up on as well with the references?
Yeah, I'm, one thing I'm curious with, with references and, and sometimes when I get references, all you get is, yes, this person worked here from this date to this date, and that's all they say. Do we know if we're going to get, or do we know how to find references that were more substantial than that?
Like talk to a past select board member, talk to a current.
Yeah, so maybe that's a conversation when you call, when you contact him to ask, is there somebody that is more substantive? I mean, we're still looking for somebody in the short term and, um, so, you know, I don't want to delay too long, especially that we, we do need somebody in the position and, um, you know, we have qualified candidates and so.
Yeah.
You know?
It's, it's a good question.
Yeah.
And I think if we ask them to give us names of sort of recently worked with boards, town managers.
I think if you ask him for references, he's going to give you the select board chair or member. He's not going to give you the HR person who can, can confirm it, but.
Right, right. I can give you those.
Yeah.
Give me those.
Yes.
Okay, Patty can help.
I think he's going to give us the select board chair in the.
And I think I would defer that to, obviously to Mike on HR to make those calls, but we do need to have some, a little more in-depth. So Patty, if you've tracked them down, that's good. Okay.
And, and Michelle, maybe you don't have to go, Mike doesn't get together nine questions, but versions of what's on our question list, like four of them, right? Which is, can you give us a sense of how good he was at meeting with department heads and getting to know them? Can you give us a sense of how well he worked on the select board? Like, just the, the obvious.
Yes.
Right, validate what we heard.
Validate what we heard, that, that's well.
Okay.
Again, it doesn't mean nine questions.
Do we, do we want to have any department heads or other staff talk with any of the candidates before we make a decision?
I don't think for this particular position, I think certainly when we're, um, taking on the, the permanent town manager position, then certainly having staff and department heads involved in some level makes sense.
Asked a different way, do we want to offer Steve the opportunity to talk to department heads or at least direct reports? Stacy's ours, town council, they could talk to the town clerk who's going to do a lot with the warrant. Do we want to offer that instead? So put it, put it an offer as opposed to invite the inquiry. Are we comfortable?
Yeah, I would, I'd put the offer out there, not, not make necessarily contingent on anything, but I think we still move forward with our recommendation and, um, our process of hiring.
Comptroller clerk, and you could pick DBW if you want, just because we have open stuff there. I don't particularly care who else, but comptroller and clerk to me with the obvious ones.
Yes. Okay.
And then just because I, for, for the sake of a preliminary motion or tentative, this makes sense to me, but I suspect that we'll all still do a little bit more of our own due diligence and if we learn anything, are we going to share, can we agree to share?
Share it with Patty and share it with HR. And I think I would leave it to Patty and HR to update me, and then we can update the board.
Are we, is this, Mike made a motion, I second.
We're deliberating. Yes.
Of course.
Yep.
Just the, the group's sense is, is this is not really a parallel track, then this is one candidate? Is that, is everyone good at that? Or do people want to say, we're also going to do some work with Bob in terms of letting him meet, meet people, et cetera? Communicate openly with him that, you know, we, we do have another candidate in the race who there's a slight preference for. I don't think that we should surprise anyone. Do we want to do that or do we want to proceed down this track? If we, if it works, perfect, probably, hope it will. If it doesn't by Thursday, then we need to reconvene as a select board.
That's fine. I mean, yeah.
People are fine reconvening.
If it, yeah, I would reconvene for that purpose, although I don't know how long the meeting would be. I mean, I would still then, I mean, they're very close to me.
It could be five minutes. That's what I'm saying, because we want to take a second motion now that's contingent on the first, so we don't.
I think we could just go with the, with the motion that's on the floor and second it, and then we can kind of just, um, if we need to change course, we can do a quick Zoom meeting. But I think the, the backup here, we agree, is Bob. I mean, they're very, we've all read it, they're very close, so it's, you know.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Okay, so we ready to take a vote?
I like having problems like this.
All right, so let's, let's take a vote on that, and then I, I would like a motion maybe on some handoff activities, but let, so we'll take the vote on the motion to proceed with Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Contingent on some things we said. So other motion on, um.
Motion to request a town manager to begin preparing a.
Briefing book.
Transition briefing book.
Second.
Can we put some?
I, I would say as a priority, you know, because there's a, there's a week here, right?
Yes.
So it would be pushing other things off.
Well, one thing Beth had promised from last Wednesday was her, an update of her work plan, what's everything, what's in queue. So maybe we talk about, and maybe if I can get with Steve tomorrow, like the briefing book had which chapter, so it's going to get updated work plan, but maybe it's a little bit more specific, not just the work plan, but it's some of those pending risks, it's litigation, it's paying attention to things. Maybe if we want to flesh out, or I can talk to Steve and others, or maybe Patty, if HR has it, what's a good table of contents for a briefing book that we want Beth to do?
Open the collective bargaining agreements, all deadlines for fall town meeting. Those are two. I agree with you on litigation.
And, you know, environmental license, license negotiations that we have with, you know, various oversight entities.
Everything that's been on the executive.
Listens.
All last six months.
Correct, which may or may not be on the work plan is my concern.
Yeah.
Right? It might be, those are the tactical things, but these are the things that are still like in flux or in.
Slot board process in terms of the meeting, preparing the town manager's report, us looking at, uh, all of the things that Beth signs. I think there's a lot, procurements and contracts and, oh, she doesn't.
Mark does, and she's the back.
I think.
She has contracts.
Fair enough. I, I think the, the plant's going to have to incorporate Mark relatively soon, too, though.
Correct.
Because the, the person's going to have, if, if Mark is doing it.
Yeah.
It's going to be about a, two weeks.
It would be a management booklet from both of them, yeah.
On that issue, do we need an interim acting, interim assistant town manager?
I think that's the point, is that, that the person has to be able to be interim for both.
Right.
Because we need to hold that position open.
Well, to that point, I had someone reached, well, someone reached out as a potential candidate for, in, for acting assistant, which I have not brought to this group. I wanted to get through this one first, but I think that's a different conversation soon, maybe for next, for Monday's, the eighth exec session, because someone did raise their hand, and pardon me, Thachis, you know, would you put Bob in that role if you had to?
That's, that's why I asked.
Yeah. Would you need him? Or, you know, because the, the goal being that the permanent hire gets to potentially hire their second.
They would have to be interim, yeah.
So, um, okay, so litigation, all the things, licensing negotiations, agreements, town manager's report, everything that's signed. If you think of more things for the briefing book, please let me know, but we will.
The only other thing I think I mentioned before, Michelle, is, um, maybe looking, um, just organizationally at, at reclassing that assistant position. Um, we, it's a very high-demand position and, um, a lot of communities that are similar to us have that as a deputy position. And if, if we're doing that now at town meeting, it may give the new town manager, um, flexibility to hire, uh, hi, you know, higher caliber, more experienced, um, assistant town managers or deputy, uh, town managers, kind of like the, at the, at the level that we're, we're seeing today.
What's the difference?
What's the distinction between deputy? So there, there's different compensation levels for them, certainly, and there's definitely experience levels, right? So you have a higher compensation track than the other ones. So you get people with more experience, um, that are competing for the position that are, and are attracted to it, um, for that reason, so.
So if we're going to do that, we need to get personnel involved quickly to get an article and a personnel meeting.
Assistant position is, is, you know, Mark's been doing it for a while and hasn't felt the need to change title, um, but it's, um, that's more of a kind of an entry level, you know, five-year-ish kind of position in most communities.
Is the way the current, uh, role is functioning actually is more of a deputy?
Absolutely.
Yes.
There's no question.
It's more just converging.
And there is that structure.
And we rely on that, right? Yeah, we, we get the benefit of that, and certainly Mark is compensated, um, at a level
to hire, you know, higher caliber, more experienced Assistant Town Managers or Deputy Town Managers, kind of like at the level that we're seeing today.
What's the difference?
So there's different compensation levels for them, certainly, and there's definitely experience levels, right? So you have a higher compensation track than the other ones. So you get people with more experience that are competing for the position and are attracted to it for that reason, so.
So if we're going to do that, we need to get personnel involved quickly to get an article and a personnel meeting.
Assistant position is, you know, Mark's been doing it for a while and hasn't felt the need to change title, but it's, that's more of a kind of an entry-level, you know, five-year-ish kind of position in most.
Is the way the current role is functioning actually is more of a deputy?
Absolutely.
Yes.
There's no question.
It's more just converging.
And there is that structure.
And we rely on that, right? Yeah, we get the benefit of that and certainly Mark has compensated at a level that's higher than the pay range that's there, but, you know, we, we would have to structure it to do it properly.
So this is just reflecting our actual.
Yes, yeah, currently. And leaving the Assistant Town Manager position, you know, on the books, but just creating another one and saying, what do we need? Let's, you know, cast a wide net.
So do you want to take the lead or you and Bill take the lead on getting that?
Sure.
Personnel Board? Because it should be a pretty, pretty straightforward article, but I think we need to, you know, get it in the warrant.
Actually, we already have.
And there are some towns that have that exact structure, so we would probably want to have some of that homework.
Yeah, I know, when you talked to Sandy and, you know, and he had been in that position for a long time and somebody at that, that level is, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So briefing book, we had a motion, right? We had a second? Yes, on the briefing book?
Yeah.
Did you capture that?
Yes.
Great. So I guess we have one, so.
Yes.
Anything else?
The only thing I was going to add is any additional budget time, like high-level budget timelines. We have our February 15th timeline.
Put that in there.
That's probably, that might actually be already in.
January meeting with the Select Board.
Yeah. I think I have that, but we should still write it down. I think that's right.
It may already be in the budget book or in process or something, so it could just be like.
It'd still be good to leave behind.
We need something that goes, like, that at least links to the.
The February 15th and everything.
Giving them an explanation of what State of the Town is, giving them an explanation what's going on with CPA would be helpful.
I think another piece, maybe not for this interim, but I think it's an opportunity to understand, this is just, I'm saying this for the board and the universe, but what meetings, you know, CPA made me think of, what meetings should the Town Manager go to? What meeting should the Designee go to? Like, big picture as we move into the next permanent hire, is, you know, do we have, we have so many committees and we've named the Town Manager Executive One, so many committees. Like, do we want to revisit, not today, not before Fall Town Meeting, but truly? Because that could be just a burnout factor for the next new hire, that it's like I'm in meetings five nights a week. I've heard from other, from the other side, yes.
Meetings are what keeps people from applying to a Winchester position, right? And so, even if.
I've heard that from the outside, yes.
Yeah, so even if we're having the Deputy Town Manager come to our meetings instead of every time having the Town Manager, that is completely plausible, right? There's, it should not be a problem for us.
So I'm just saying that for the board as, that's who, that's who our report is, that's who we evaluate. We should be thoughtful about, as much as we want, you know, we heard that their job is to support the board and protect the Select Board, we should also be thinking about protecting some of their time, too.
Yeah.
When we move into that next phase. So I'm just saying that, because I have heard it from more than one person in my various journeys on the phone. Okay. Any other things we want to add or any other motions we want to make? We can otherwise adjourn.
Have you voted on that?
We have not, but I want to make sure if anything more we want to throw out there or add to this one.
Vote yes.
Wait, I will call the board in a second. They want to add to the briefing book. Okay, then let's, the vote on the briefing.
Circulate it and we can email you more.
Yes. So, motion.
I have to do it fast though, because Beth's only got four days.
Yes, right, yeah.
Motion to grade the briefing book. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thoughts on contents? Get to Patty or me. Any other motions we want to make tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Works. All those in favor? Aye. Nice. Thank you, Win Kim. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for pulling this together and.